Vanessa.
Excuse me, is Kenneth Boy in the hall? He made an amendment to Article 25. There he is. Could you come down here, sir? Just a question on that. We'll be getting going in just a minute. How about Marnie Houlihan? Marnie? Marnie Houlihan, going once, twice. There she is. No, 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 we're starting, we're starting, although. Sorry. I understand that. He's just, oh, I see. Okay. Okay. Let's go. Good evening, welcome back. I'm informed by the town clerk that we do have a quorum. I will, so we will reconvene our recess session as of now. I do need to update the list of non-resident attendees for your approval. For tonight, we have Brian Ballantyne, Treasurer; Karen Galligan, DPW Superintendent; Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator; Michelle Jenkins, Assistant Town Clerk; Tom Laflamme, IT Manager; Heather Morris, Trottier Audio-Visual; Mark Purple, Town Administrator; and Jay Tallerman, Special Town Counsel. Do I have leave of the hall to allow these people in the hall? Please show your cards, it's a majority vote. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We were working through a couple of formal amendments on some articles to come, but we can reconvene, or resume where we left off, which is Article 24. CPA, please, Ms. Gillespie.
Okay, I'm back. I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and standing with me is Sarah Russitano, who's a member of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And this is a CPA article for a project of the Open Space Preservation Commission. Article 24, I make a motion that the town vote to appropriate $20,300 from the CPA General Unreserved Fund as written in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? Ms. Gillespie.
Okay, so... This project, now, am I switching it? Okay. So this is for invasive species removal at 32 Cordovaill Road, which you also know as the golf course, but it is not about golf, it's about the conservation values of the land which are there, whether it's a golf course or not. And we do have a preservation restriction on the land, and we're also involved in the Audubon International Classic Course certification process that requires removal of invasive species, and this is just the first phase. So... There's a stand-up of the invasive tree of heaven and its bait for the spotted lanternfly. Just as the tree of heaven by itself, it's worth taking out, but this situation makes it even more important. That's what the spotted lanternfly looks like. It's in Pennsylvania now, headed our way, and it's been declared one of the worst insect infestations that this country is ever going to know. These are different looks of it at different stages. There's a tree infested with it. What it does is it comes, the tree of heaven is probably co-evolved with it in its native country, and it will come to the tree of heaven and breed, and then after that, it will spread and eat everything. It's not as specific as the Asian longhorn beetle that we had in Worcester where it was certain trees. This will eat, take out everything. Infestation. Infestation. People in Pennsylvania, they can't have cookouts, they can't sit in their backyard, it's pretty gross. They excrete a thing called like honeydew, and it's gross, from what I've understood. So this also, what this project originally started for, we found the invasive tree of heaven after we were looking at this stand of Japanese knotweed. And when we purchased the golf course, one of the things we wanted to protect it for was the heritage landscape, and as you cross the causeway coming into town, you had that beautiful expanse of looking at the heritage landscape of the golf course. That is slowly being obliterated by the Japanese knotweed. This is not in season, so you can't see how much, it's like a solid hedge, and it's spreading. The knotweed has deep roots, and there's a historic stone wall there if you take a look, and on one side you have a beautiful stone wall from the cemetery, and on the other side, this stone wall which you can't see, and also it's being destroyed, the value of that, because the roots go in and dislodge the rocks. So it's destroying the stone wall. So it will restore, if we remove the Japanese knotweed, it will save the stone wall and restore the viewscape and also ecological value of the property. We also recently purchased the Halloran property, that's South Borough's newest conservation land. It has some beautiful old woods, there's some cart trails, it's a beautiful piece of property. We're still working on developing access and getting the conservation restriction on that property. However, even though it's relatively invasive-free, the edges are being encroached upon by oriental bittersweet, and there are some invasives on the interior we want to address. After we remove the invasives, our goal, we are currently working with Dr. Robert D. Gere, he's doing a study. South Borough's Breakneck Hill is one of the properties. This study has, right now, statewide significance and national significance as well. He's been interviewed by Newsweek Magazine, in addition to many other publications, peer-reviewed scientific reports. And the first time he came to Breakneck Hill, he found the rare Bombas Fervitus that until we were documenting it, the state had declared it, extirpated from the state, that it was no longer here. Now we, you know, we're documenting it at Breakneck Hill. Sorry about that little red dot, but... So there's the rare Bombas Fervitus. So at our presentation at the segments, it was suggested we show pictures of what an infestation looks like in a project we've done and what the results were. So back in 2004, Breakneck Hill was declared the worst infestation of oriental bittersweet in Metro West. This is a picture of it. There's a trail, you can see, I think that stick-up John walking on that trail. We had, this is not a CPA grant, but it just shows you, so if we leave the invasives alone, this is what happens. They get worse. The ones, bittersweet at, the Halloran property would expand, maybe not to this level because there's more shade than the apple orchard, but it's still a problem. You get a monoculture, you don't have the diversity of species birds, butterflies. butterflies, other insects and animals that we want on our conservation land. This was, we got a grant from the feds through NRCS. And after massive restoration, that's the same view of what we've accomplished and how it looks today. And we continue to manage it. There's an additional, I think about 15 or 20 acres that still have invasive problem at Breakneck Hill. We have another project that's ongoing. That's what it looks like today after the, the area that we did the invasive species removal. That's just for an example. So for this project, our goal is to have this and this, but not this or this. Thank you.
All right, comment or, excuse me, guys, comment or question on Article 24, please? All right, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, Dan.
I didn't mean to hold up the vote. I just want to thank Ms. Gillespie. I did ask for this. I think it was incredibly helpful. I think we, the town allocated 100,000, was it two years ago, for invasive species removal. I knew you'd made some progress on that, but there's still more to go, and then more tonight. So that was incredibly helpful to see the before and after, and thank you for doing that. Sorry to hold up the vote.
That's all right. Okay, all those in favor?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Dick Snyder, 49 Pine Hill Road, can we hear from advisory on this?
Absolutely. Advisory, position?
Is this one on? So, hi, Dick. We supported this one 6-0. Didn't have much question on this one. It's $20,000, and you can see what they've been doing in the past. So this one was pretty much unanimous without much dissent at all.
Okay, any other comment or question? All right, all those in favor. For the third time, we'll hold up your cards. All opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Article 25, Mr. Shea.
Town, one more time. I move that the town amend Chapter 41 of the Code of the Town of Southborough, Massachusetts, entitled Town Meetings by Striking in Its Entirety from Section 41-1, entitled Date and Time of Annual Town Meeting, the current text, and replacing it with the text as printed in the warrant.
Receives a second. I understand we have an amendment. Is it ready to go? Sir, please go to the microphone.
Yes, thank you. Ken Boyd, 10 Ashley Road. The Saturday format is great. I wouldn't be at town meeting if it was late at night, so, so thank you for that. I do note, though, that the last Saturday of March will occasionally conflict with Easter weekend and Passover, so I move to amend Article 25 by striking the word "last Saturday" and inserting the words "second to last Saturday."
Does that amendment receive a second? All right, receives a second. Comment or discussion? I think I'll, if the selectmen want to go first on that, I'll recognize it since it's your article.
I guess, you know, so we haven't had the chance to discuss that amendment. I think even by going to the second, but today, the second to last Saturday in March, there still is the potential for conflict with a number of religious holidays. There is language in here that does say that in the event of a secular or other holiday, that session shall be adjourned to the next night. That shall be agreeable. You know, if it's a Saturday, I don't know if that means that it defaults to the Monday for that year. I just don't know that making that change is necessarily going to solve the problem of a conflict with any secular holiday. So I certainly, you know, understand that, and I'm sensitive to it myself, but, you know, we could, you know, potentially be having Easter weekend this, this weekend as well. So, don't know that that amendment solves all the problems with it, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Butler?
John Butler, 4 Davis Road, speaking to the amendment. A few years ago, I read the statute regarding town meetings, and my recollection was, perhaps town council knows this, that, my recollection was that the select, Board of Selectmen has a statutory right to set town meeting at any date up to the date specified in the bylaw. So that, if I'm correct, and I, I was working from memory a few years ago, if I'm correct, the, the authority that the amendment would grant already vests with the Board of Selectmen, even if we pass this, that is, if they saw that there was a conflict and they wanted to pull it up, they could, at their discretion, do so by virtue of the statute. But my memory may be faulty. That's, that's what I recall from the statute at the state level.
That point is well taken, but once you've established a bylaw provision that details the, the procedure for a town meeting, that's what would supersede, unless there was some kind of an, not an emergency, but something that would not allow the select, not allow the town to conduct it on a certain date. So once the legislative body has spoken, that would supersede what was historically a common understanding.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Andrew Mills, 2 McNeil Drive, speaking as a citizen. I just want to recognize everything that the town has done, and all the committees to get ready for this earlier than the years passed. I think a lot of people who aren't on committees or boards or part of the town themselves don't understand the effort that it took. I just want to recognize it in general to everyone who helped make this town meeting as early as it is. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Well, I was hoping someone was going to ask us why advisory said 06 on this one, but since you didn't, I'll tell you anyway. We're not opposed to changing the date to the last Saturday. That, that was not our issue. So to kind of key on, Mr. Mills just said, this was really hard to do. Accelerating by the three or four weeks, advisories met every single Tuesday since the first of the year, and, you know, we were still going back and forth on a few small things this past week, so it's really hard to get everything done in this truncated period. So advisory met with Mr. Hagerty, our town clerk, and he told us about what a couple other towns around us do, which we thought sounded like a pretty good idea. Now, maybe it's too soon to think about it tonight. Let this play out and see how this turned out as far as the first time in March, but there's a couple towns that actually have their main meeting in May. And then if they've got some type of dead article that needs a vote at the town election, they have a special in the fall. And so there's a lot of us that like the idea of having a special regularly, because it's a lot to cover in one meeting. I mean, look, here we are, it's a Saturday night, sitting here. So that was where advisories, non-support came from. We just have kind of a whole different idea about where we may want to go at some point down the road.
Thank you. Ms. Gillespie?
Freddie Gillespie. I don't have an idea of when it could be, but I wanted to tag on to the comment that if you're not on a committee that deals with budgets, you may not know how difficult this was. The CPC specifically has an, an application process. People aren't going to apply over the summer. It's due in September, and we never get applications that are perfect, and we don't say no. So we work with applicants. And this year, we were actually meeting and getting numbers so that we could put these projects forth a week after our Warren articles were due. And we're meeting at the holiday season. It puts great pressure for when the Warren articles have to be in, for the selectmen and everyone to review them, so it can go to print, and you've got Christmas and New Year's, and, you know, for our committee anyhow, it creates, creates a hardship to, to make those kinds of meetings, and then you have to go to advisory and selectmen, and, you know, if there's any way to push it out a little further, we don't even have some of the numbers in that we have to work with from the state until after, you know, till we're writing the Warren article. So one of the things, the whole Warren article for the library, that could have had way more public outreach about the preservation restriction and education on that portion of it, but, you know, these things were coming up at the last minute, going to print and review, and then coming here. So that's just a comment to consider.
Eileen Samberg, 7 Granville Road. I just wanted to say that in 2021, the last night, the last Saturday in March is the first night of Passover. In 2024, it's the Saturday before Easter Sunday, and in 2027, it's also the Saturday before Easter Sunday. There are lots of other dates, but I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Colery, 51 Central Street. I made a joke earlier today that I've been here 50, 50 years doing this, and I noticed when I came in today, something. We went from nights to weekends. We're supposedly get a lot more people. Well, I see a lot less people here. So obviously, at least for the first round, we didn't get what, or the townspeople didn't get what they thought they would get. And also, with March and April, you're dealing with weekends with holidays, and, you know, being a Catholic, I know my, the Easter moves all over the place in April, so it gets very difficult when to plan these. So I wonder if it'd be worthwhile to take a deep breath and sit back and, and table this motion, to really rethink that, and possibly, if we have another special town meeting, or the Board of Selectmen, if we don't mandate to you, have the right, from what I understand what was said tonight, to schedule the town meeting and give you guys some time to do that, and see if we want to go back to, you know, really, come right down. When you get into May, most of us are cleaning our yards and stuff, so we don't want to go on a weekend there. And maybe, maybe we didn't see the results, as I look at this room here now, it's almost half full. Maybe we go back to the nights and what we used to do for many years that worked. I don't know, but I don't think that, as I see March holidays, and we're really running into a problem with different other things. Not only that, you haven't got the state money back, you don't know what quite that's going to be. You know what Freddie just said, makes a little bit of sense to me, too, as we try to get things organized to come to town meeting here in March. And of course, the budget process isn't just a slam dunk, a couple days of meetings, and it's over. We all, you guys know that more than I do. So maybe we, maybe we ought to indefinitely postpone this. I'm willing to make that as a motion if you think that'll work. You're the people that have to deal with this, not me.
Well, the, the motion on the floor is to add the words "second to last Saturday." Once we dispose of, I, I, I think what you're asking is do we indefinitely postpone the, the, the original question?
Mm-hmm.
And we're not, you'll have a chance to do that, but we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Dan Formack, Powder Mill, Powder Mill Lane. I, the budget stuff, that all seems to make sense, and I don't have a particular opinion on whether it should be the second Saturday or the last one. Just to respond to what you said, you're right, this room is pretty empty. I thought it was pretty full this afternoon, and I thought it was a different demographic than it was prior, and to be honest, it's impossible to say, and we'll get numbers eventually. The calendar field thing would have failed, I think, this afternoon, if this was a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night. I like doing my yard, too, but I've got a school kid. No way she would have been there that late. So just saying, for the selectmen, I do hope we continue on Saturdays, whether that's the, in March or April or May.
Thank you. Sir, are you going to the mic, or are you? Okay, go ahead.
All right. Robert Reader, 4 Blendon Woods Drive. Not to drive things crazy, but if I possibly amend this to say, no later than the last Saturday, and that addresses the issue of giving the selectmen the chance to do it on the next to la, second to last, if it's a Easter or something, or to do it on the last, if there's no conflict and gives them more time. Would I amend this amendment, or would I wait for this one to be voted on?
You can move to amend the amendment. Yes, we have to get it in writing?
I will come up. I move to, move, excuse me, I move to amend the amendment to strike second to last Saturday and replace it with, I'm sorry, shall be held on the second to last Saturday and replace it with shall be held no later than the last Saturday.
Is there a second? All right, let's get that in writing, please. Mr. Moderator? Yeah, go ahead. Do you want to speak to the amended amendment?
Yes, I do. It's Tim Martell, 7 Bantry Road. I wanted to point out that the language that he just mentioned doesn't actually specify it has to happen on a Saturday, and that's kind of a big change from what we have now, so he might want to be careful with what he writes on the paper.
Did you get that? I think that's a good point. You're not specifying Saturday, you're saying no later than the last Saturday. That could be any day, so, so, thank you. Mr. Hagerty?
Mr. Moderator, Jim Hagerty, Town Clerk. 320 voters checked in for the afternoon session. We had 167 as of 7:05 tonight, and I'm waiting for the latest update.
Thank you. Somebody asked about...
As of a couple minutes after 7 o'clock, we had 167. A lot more people have come in, so I've asked for an update on that. I'm not sure. 320 was the afternoon number, excuse me. The question is average night. The answer is there is no average night. We've had some really big meetings. We had the 700-plus, the 500. We've had other meetings. It's all driven by the, the topic. We've had meetings where we've only had 150. Off the top of my head, 320 is about an average number. And I just, you know, and looking eyeballing the, the audience that was here in the afternoon, we had a big crowd, pretty good crowd. I'll do the demographic, the numbers, but, you know, sitting up there looking, it was a, a pretty good house.
Mr. Hagerty tells me the current count tonight is 192. All right, we're working on getting this on the screen, but the amendment, it's pretty simple. The amendment is to strike the words, now this is the, this is the amendment to the amendment. The first amendment was to make Saturday the second to last Saturday. This latest amendment strikes second to last Saturday and says "on a Saturday that is no later than the last Saturday." So I'll take questions or comments about that, if there are any. Okay, do we feel like, okay, there it is. All right, so this, this amendment to the amendment requires a majority vote. I'm first going to go down to selectmen. It was originally their article to get a position on this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen support this amendment as written.
Okay, thank you. Does advisory want to? One second. All right, advisory supports the, the amendment to the amendment by a vote of 4 to 2. This requires a majority vote. We're voting on the amendment, not the whole article just yet. All those in favor of the, of the amendment to the amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed. That motion carries. So now, we are on the main article, as you see on the screen. Yes. Well, he beat you to the point of order. Go ahead, Mr. Butler.
So we've gotten ourselves in a bit of a peculiar position, because... So we've gotten ourselves in a bit of a peculiar position because you said we were amending the amendment, which means that the amendment has been amended and is still before us, if I understand it correctly.
Well, I think technically, you're right. We, we voted just now to accept the amendment, and now we, now we need to vote.
I wish I were wrong.
No, no. Let me explain what Mr. Butler is correctly saying. We, we voted to accept or to agree that we could amend the first amendment. Now the first amendment is amended, we have to dispose of the first amendment. And so, all in favor, it's a majority vote, of disposing of the first amendment as amended, please raise your cards. All opposed. Okay. Now we are back to the main article, as you see on the screen. This is still a majority vote. I see no one at the mics, so we will take that vote, all in favor of the current language on the screen, please raise your cards. All opposed. Okay, that motion carries also. Article twenty-five. Was that twenty-five? Keep me straight. Article twenty-six, Mr. Hubley.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town of Southborough will vote to amend Chapter sixty-three of the Code of the Town of Southborough, Massachusetts by striking chap, by striking Chapter sixty-three, Section sixty-three dash three E, procedure in its entirety and uncertain in place. Therefore, the following text, as printed in the warrant.
So receive a second. Mr. Hubley.
This article will change the number of days, it's just a number change, it's not the whole, what's written in the warrant, it's just the number, from fifteen to forty-five. To hold a demolition delay hearing for historical or architectural significant building from fifteen to forty-five days. This will allow for compliance with the public posting requirements conducted for hearings.
Thank you. Comment or question on Article twenty-six? Okay, it's a majority vote. General bylaw requires a majority vote, all those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article twenty-seven, Mr. Hegarty. This is yours? Yeah. I don't know if, if someone could go out to the lobby and grab Michelle Jenkins, I think Mr. Hegarty needs to make this motion, not as the clerk, but as a citizen, so we need a clerk in the room. Go ahead, Mr. Hegarty.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Hegarty, fourteen Melvick Crest Drive. I move that the town vote to amend the provisions of the Southborough Code, Chapter nine, entitled Committees, by adding a new Section nine twenty-seven, entitled Meetings Prohibited on Election Day or when Town Offices are closed due to a weather or other emergency, with the following text. Chapter nine, Section twenty-seven dot one, on any day that the Board of Selectmen or the designee announced that all town offices are closed for the day due to a weather or other emergency, any scheduled public meetings shall be canceled. The town clerk shall post notices of cancellation for all previous scheduled meetings on the town website. This prohibition will not apply to emergency meetings held to address the weather or other emergency. And Chapter nine, Section twenty-seven dot two, no board committee or commission scouts schedule a meeting on any day of the, of any town, state, or federal election.
Does that receive a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Hegarty.
This is essentially to clarify what has been the existing practice in town and eliminate some confusion. Commissions or hearings can't be held on election days, yet you've got kind of a catch twenty-two where a board can't hold a hearing, but they can hold a meeting. It just clarifies that, frankly, I think we shouldn't be holding meetings on election days anyway. That's the second half. The first half is in response to something that happened last year, where a, there was a weather emergency, a snow emergency in town, and the governor ordered everybody off the roads, and the town offices were closed, and there was a meeting scheduled for that night by one board, and I took it upon myself to say your meeting is canceled because the town offices are closed, and that created a little bit of pushback. And even, the point of it is, if we're telling the public that the, the town is closed for the day, and even though somebody may have a four-wheel drive that they can get to the committee, to the meeting, the trick is, does the public, we should do, I'm sorry that it's the last minute in this, this committee last, last year, but it's not fair to the public on the one hand to say, stay off the roads and everything's closed, and, you know, people would make their plans and not plan to go to the meeting, and then the committee meets. So it's just, to me, it's just common sense, and that's it.
Thank you. Comment or question about Article twenty-seven? Yes?
Mimi Latrell, nineteen Oregon. So is this that no meetings can be held when there's a weather emergency? Because there are a lot of instances where it snows during the day and the townhouse gets closed, and all the roads are clear, and it's fine at seven o'clock at night when most meetings are held.
No, that's exactly it. If the weather conditions are so severe that the town, the government, the, the executive body of the, the town say that the business building of the town has to be closed, if it's that severe, then we shut down for the day. And that's the message we're sending to the public, and I, I think it's wrong to expect the public to have the town offices closed in the morning, but then open up at seven o'clock at night for a meeting. I, I just, I'm trying to have the lowest standard of, we send conflicting messages when we do that, and I, I think that's wrong. To me, it's irrelevant that members of the committee can show up, it's whether the public would be expected to know that there'll be an exception and we'll open the building at seven o'clock at night, and they're not going to know that. And I, I just don't think that's a good thing for the town to operate that way.
But there, if the roads are clear and the public can get there...
Well, here's the deal. To my knowledge, that was the only thing in the four years that I've been the town clerk where, that's the only instance that's popped up. There's plenty of times where there'll be a delayed opening, no, no, a coincidence with is a delayed opening. I'm saying if something is so severe that they shut down the road, so they, they tell you to stay off the roads and they shut down the buildings, I, it hasn't happened this year, and it happened last year one day, so it's a pretty rare event. But I think if it's, is that significant that the town closes for the whole day, which is pretty rare, I think you tell them the public, we have a weather emergency, stay home. And, you know, I, I just don't think it makes sense to expect the public to say, wait a minute, everything's closed for the day, but let me see if the, you know, the, I don't know, Recreation Commission's going to hold the meeting at eight o'clock at night. I, I think it sends the wrong signal for participation by the voters. I, I'm sorry to throw a wreck out of the bus, sorry, folks, but I almost said the Tooth Fairy Committee, that's my usual one, but sorry. No, I just, it just, it just, frankly, it just stuck in my craw that the, the person that I, it wasn't Mimi. The person last year said, well, several members of my committee have four-wheel-drive vehicles. And I'm like, yeah? Well, what about the person that doesn't have a four-wheel drive? What about the person with a wheelchair? What about the person that has to walk there? And that's the standard that I think that we should hold ourselves accountable to, not, so I, it, it ticked me off, so that's why I brought this forward.
All right, Mr. Hegarty. Well stated. Give him the hook. Any other comment or question about Article twenty-seven? It's a general bylaw, majority vote, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article twenty-eight, Mr. Morris.
I move that the town vote to add a new chapter to the town code, Chapter one fifty-three, Trees, as written in the town warrant.
Does it receive a second? Mr. Morris?
The purpose of this warrant article is to accomplish one of the four criteria for a city or town to become a Tree City USA community. The Tree City USA program has been a green, has been greening up cities and towns across America since nineteen seventy-six. It's a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. Tree City USA is a national recognition program and is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with U.S. Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters. Green infrastructure is the only part of a city's infrastructure that actually appreciates in value over time. We all know the, the benefit of trees, they clean the air, they absorb pollutants, they absorb carbon dioxide, provide life-giving oxygen, and shade trees cool and improve More than three thousand four hundred communities have made the commitment to becoming a Tree City USA. They have achieved Tree City USA status by meeting four core standards of sound urban forestry management. According to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the DCR, there are eighty-seven cities and towns in Massachusetts that are Tree City communities, including these in our area. We have Westboro has been a Tree City for nine years, Marlboro for seven, Framingham for twenty-seven years, Grafton eighteen, Natick eleven, and Weston fifteen years. These are the four standards for Tree City designation. Southborough has had a tree warden for a long time. Additionally, the DPW frequently uses the services of a professional arborist. Southborough meets standard number one. Southborough has had a tree warden for a long time. Additionally, the, oh, I just read the, sorry. Southborough does not meet standard number two, and that's the goal of Article twenty-eight. An ordinance is approved by a city council in a city. In a town, the ordinance is called a bylaw, and it's approved by the town meeting, which is where we are tonight. Southborough has a tree policy dated two thousand and ten, however, it does not meet the standard of a bylaw. Article twenty-eight will be our bylaw that will meet standard number two. The bylaw simply codifies what we already do relative to public trees. We currently comply with the applicable sections of Massachusetts General Law eighty-seven, Shade Trees, and Mass. General Law forty, Section fifteen C, Scenic Roads. Southborough meets standard number three. The standard requires a community to spend two dollars per capita on its tree program. Southborough consistently spends over sixty thousand dollars a year, or approximately six dollars per capita. Southborough does not meet standard number four, the Arbor Day Observance. Approving Article twenty-eight tonight will encourage our selectmen to issue a proclamation to observe Arbor Day in the town of Southborough. This proclamation can call for actions that may include involving schoolchildren, scouts, church groups, sponsoring contests, Tree of the Year contest, and of course, planting In the absence of a volunteer, the town planner will draft the proclamation and submit it to the selectmen for their consideration. So we have to meet the four standards, complete and upload the application each year after the initial approval and designation. And again, in the absence of a volunteer, the town planner will draft, will complete the application this year and in, in coming years. So let us help Southborough keep trees as an important and beautiful component of our public roads and other public places. Please support this article. And in response to the question that was asked earlier to hold this, the, and I consulted with town council in our break, the town currently has no authority to go onto private property to plant trees or cut trees down, and after the, the town would become a, a Tree City, that would remain the case. Although, there is a provision in Chapter eighty-seven that allows private property owners to plant trees within twenty feet of the right-of-way and have those trees counted toward the town's Tree City designation. So hopefully, this will pass tonight. We will have a proclamation for this year's Arbor Day from the selectmen. We will, and if that, if we get to that point, then we plan to put a link on the town website for people to submit their name and address and volunteer to plant a tree at their expense on private property and have that count toward our Tree City program. Having discussed this just briefly with a few people, we already have three, three people that are willing to plant a tree in, in their yard along the streetscape within twenty feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Just to amplify what he said at the very end, private property, but within twenty feet of the right-of-way counts. So I don't want to be confused about public and private on that, correct?
Correct.
All right. Comments and questions? Yes, sir?
Yes, Arthur Lemey, twelve Bigelow Road. I, I asked to have this article held, and Mr. Morris has answered all my questions. I only have one additional question, is the Board of Selectmen did not support this. I was wondering if I could get a reason why they did not.
No, it says they do.
Oh, they do now, I'm sorry. The one I've got says that town, well, it's okay, fine, just worry you now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comment or question? This article is a general bylaw, requires a majority vote, all those in favor, show your cards. All opposed. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Morris. Article twenty-nine is handling.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to request that maybe we could jump to Article thirty-four because that's one bylaw, one voting action. It saves time.
I'm not understanding. What, what is it, about thirty-four? I, I don't understand what, what's significant about thirty-four versus...
It's, it's just one bylaw, one voting action. I can speak to that quickly and just move on.
Why don't we, I, I, honestly, I'm not understanding, but if you want to move to advance thirty-four, you have that right, and then we'll take the leave of the hall. Are you making that motion?
Yes, please.
Does it receive a second?
Second.
All right. You want to speak again? Why do you want to advance thirty-four?
Again, because it's just faster, it's in the interest of time, saves time for the, for the floor, and it's one bylaw, one voting action.
All right. Advancing an article requires a majority vote of the hall. All in favor of advancing thirty-four ahead of twenty-nine, please show your cards.
Moderator, question?
Is it a point of order, Mr. Bullen?
It's a question relative to the motion.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Please go ahead.
Normally, take questions, right?
Yes.
William Boland, thirty-five East Main Street. I don't understand how an article that's three pages long is going to be quicker than an article that's shorter. So it... it... it might be the proponents' feeling, but it certainly doesn't appear that way to me that something three pages is going to go quicker than something that's shorter.
Okay, thank you.
Well, presumably, everyone here is perfectly capable of having read this in advance. I think I've seen a lot of people during other articles reading that, so...
Okay. Uh, no other comments or questions? All in favor of advancing thirty-four ahead of twenty-nine, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay? That motion fails. We're back to Article twenty-nine. Ms. Hanlon. Before you go, Ms. Hanlon, I believe we have an amendment, uh, pre-submitted on this. Why don't we put that on the floor so that we can go all at once? Do you want me to wait until the article is introduced? Um, well, did you... I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Hanlon, make your motion.
I think we need the IT person to advance the slide.
Speak louder.
Article twenty-nine is to see if the town will vote to repeal, uh, Town Code Section forty-one dash twenty-two-one, electioneering prohibited. And it actually goes simultaneously with the second piece, which is to see if the town will vote to add the following to Chapter forty-one of the Town Code.
Please add as printed in the warrant?
As printed in the warrant.
All right. Does it receive a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Hanlon, do you want to briefly introduce what's happening here, and then we'll go to Mr. Hegarty?
Sure. As an important upfront note, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. All of my articles have been reviewed by expert legal counsel in the areas of municipal and state law. This is one article with two voting actions, and they go together. As a longtime resident of the town, I love the town, and the goal of these articles is simply to help in improving functionality and transparency by installing, uh, good policies. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Two of these policies are based on, almost verbatim, policies of other towns. Article twenty-nine, um, again, another important upfront note. It was, um, I was able to have several very good and productive conversations with the town clerk to reach an understanding on how to proceed, and I'll let him speak for himself, and you can listen very carefully to any amendment from the town clerk. So the question is, is why is electioneering prohibited? The intent is not to place pressure on individuals entering a polling facility on election day. Therefore, a state law on electioneering is specific to polls and elections only. State law prohibits collecting signatures on petitions, referendum petitions, within a hundred and fifty feet to the entrance of a polling place. How does the... how does... Sorry. Why is Southboro's current electioneering law different than the state's? We added town meeting and early voting in 2017. It now put in a hundred and fifty-foot setback, and unfortunately, this inadvertently, I think, obscures the freedom of distribution of voter information and the circulation of petitions to educate the voting community. Southboro is the only community known by Secretary Galvin's office that has amended electioneering laws to apply to town meeting. So how does the language impact our town? It's common practice for the sponsors of warrant articles to have written materials out on the tables. You have no gauntlet to run through if those materials are out and, uh, fully accessible and in plain sight. Basically, uh, my thinking is, is this was impinging on your First Amendment rights, and if we repeal it and replace it with, uh, the proposed language, it no longer does that. So why vote to repeal and replace the language? You need open information exchange. You deserve all the information that's relevant for understanding important issues at town meeting. You'd like to engage in debate. It's important to circulate petitions, and, um, this is about not imposing electioneering rules at town meeting and virtually being the only town or city in the state to have that. I ask you to support the article for several reasons: to restore these rights and be on par with other cities and towns in the state; to preserve and protect freedom of speech and First Amendment rights, and that's no small thing. When I try to explain to the younger members of my family what that means, I tell them about the six wreaths that I lay every Christmas at the veterans cemetery and what we can do to honor them by staying informed, active, and voting, and I know how my family feels about that, and I hope your family feels the same way. Lastly, and most importantly, I feel this should not be regulated at town meeting. It wasn't before April of 2017. We should not have setbacks or restrictions on these rights because you may need them. Sometime, you may come forward, and you may need to circulate your own citizen petition and try to right a wrong. At the last meeting, I noticed that there were orange cones and a setback. There was no gauntlet. We had one person out front. She's a mother and a wife of two with advanced degrees who bothered to get off the couch for all of us, informed, and was getting the last five signatures for a petition on behalf of all of us. So I would ask you to please, um, support the article. And now, Mr. Hegarty, I believe, has, um...
Mr. Hegarty, please.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment that I filed with you. I move to amend Article twenty-nine by striking the article in its entirety and replacing it with that the town vote to amend Chapter forty-one twenty-two dot one of the Code of the town of Southboro, electioneering prohibiting by striking the chapter in its entirety and replacing in place thereof, except as may otherwise provided... beep, sorry. Except as may be otherwise provided by any other general or special law of the Commonwealth, all candidates or their agents are expressly forbidden to enter a building which is used as a polling place or town meeting for the purposes of electioneering or greeting citizens or voters or for petitioning or soliciting signatures for any purpose.
Does it receive a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hegarty.
Okay. I'm here to tell you I made a mistake two years ago. Simple as that. Let me give you a little background on this. I feel badly to have my back to you guys most of the time. When the... I recommended to you that we solve a problem, and part of what we solved was actually create a problem and infringe your rights outside, and that was a mistake. So let me just... let me turn the clock back a little bit. There are rules that govern conduct at polling places on election days, but the state laws only govern election days. So early voting is not covered by the law because it's not election day, so it's wide open. So people could literally come in front of the building. In addition, as you notice, we've had changes over the past four years out front here. We've changed from manual to electronic check-in. We've changed the card systems. We've done a lot of things that changed the configuration of the lobby. We have limited space here, and you also may notice a couple of years ago that I started allowing any group to put tables out front for any reason, and it turned into a circus. It turned into a flea market, and I had people complain to me that they couldn't find the warrants. It also, quite frankly, is a fire code violation. Now, my response to the article here, number one, is to operate this in a safe manner. Number two is to have a proper and accurate check-in process, and number three is to provide information to you. Those of you who have been like me, that have had a leave a building in emergency, I take it very seriously, the setbacks. We've measured the forty-four inch setbacks. We've had six-feet setbacks of things outside. We have a limited amount of space here, and that's just what it is. So the... when this was implemented the first time, Mrs. Houlihan was outside gathering signatures inside the hundred and fifty foot, and I had to go out and tell her she couldn't do it because that was the bylaw, and I felt badly about it. And I actually spoke to her later about that. I said, "That was a mistake." She wasn't creating any problems outside, and I'm the dummy that suggested that, and that's a mistake. If there's a problem outside, let's the police address it. It's not been... And there are people that said they'd like to have this because they, quote-unquote, "don't want to be bothered coming in the front." No, that's... if there's an issue, let a cop address it. That's outside. My concern is once you come inside the building here. We just don't have the space. And the article as presented, it talked about providing information about the citizen's petitions. We do. It's all on the same table. If you saw, we had a grid out there with four things. Everybody has equal access. The other thing that the initial article called for was to... the proponents of articles would have the right to greet people and stand inside. You can't do that. You can't guarantee that right. How do you identify one proponent versus another? And if you're going to guarantee a space for a proponent, don't you have to guarantee the space for an opponent? And how do you do that in the shoebox we have outside? That's what this hall is for. That's where the discussion should take place. Last year, I had to turn somebody away... no, petitions. We had to... I had to ask somebody to leave out front here because they were standing in the pathways to come in the door with a petition. So people coming through, I had to turn and walk around on the side of the person. You just can't do that. Without this article, I don't have that right. If you're standing enough, you're talking to your neighbor. I'm not going to ask whether you're talking about the weather in article. That's not the point of this at all. Just inside this area, we don't have the space that you have at Algonquin. We don't... we just don't. So, once you get inside the building, that's when I think it should be free to check-in, get your materials, and come on inside. Outside, petition, signatures, anything you want to do, terrific. That's the way it's always been. And just to back up a bit, when I got... when I started this job four years ago, I asked why we put signs out there, no electioneering, uh, no, you know, fifty... a hundred and fifty-foot barriers. The signs had always been put out here. And I said, "Well, where's our authority to do that?" Well, it's kind of what they always... what I've learned in a lot of towns, clerks have their own rules. You can't have your own rules. They're your rules. This is your town meeting. And just to kind of put this in perspective, the Secretary of State has nothing to do with these rules. All the bylaws that you approve here are vetted through the Attorney General's office, and they look at them to see whether they conflict with the state or federal law. They said this did not conflict with the two of them. What I... and I'm not an attorney, but what I understand about, um, regulations that restrict freedom of speech, they are... they have to be reasonable as to the three things, and town council can correct me if I'm wrong on this. Three... the three standards are, is it reasonable as to the time, the place, and the manner? And when you look at the space we have outside, I'll be happy to give my tape measure to measure this out. You know, I was literally out there with a tape measure yesterday and today, measuring six feet from the elevated doors, measuring forty-four inches between the places. Those are the building fire codes we have to meet. That's the space that we have inside, and we don't have the same space that Algonquin has or other places have. So, um, I think this is reasonable, and I ask you to support the amendment.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not necessarily against the intent, but the way it's written, I believe there are some people in this room right now that have pulled papers and are candidates for town election, and they can't be here saying hi to their citizens, and I think everyone in the room are voters. So if you're here greeting people, saying hi, "How you doing?", I mean, I think... I think that says that expressly forbidden. So I think you got a problem with the way that's written because, you know, who's going to say, "This person's a candidate for town election, and you're saying hi to Freddie", and, um, that's campaigning. I think there's a problem with the way it's written.
Mr. Moderator, if I could point out in the second last statement, the middle of it, "For the purpose of electioneering." This is...
Or... or greeting.
This is the language that's in the state statute for this. Nobody's trying to talk to him saying hello to anybody. That's not... it's not going to happen. Nobody's going to go up and monitor your conversation. But the flip side of this is... well, isn't at the end of the day, this is your hall. These are your rules, however you want this to be. So, um, I think this is reasonable. I ask you to support it, but it's your decision.
Okay, let's go over here, ma'am.
Marnie Houlihan, twenty-six Clifford. The infamous Miss Houlihan, who was soliciting such shares last year. So I'm opposed to the motion on the floor to amend the amendment. The reason being is we do have quite a bit of space in this building, and there is a cafeteria that's wide open. There's an opportunity to use flow of people and traffic to move, um, information or greeting or allowing candidates information in another part of the forum. So I am still supporting Article twenty-nine as written and not the amendment. I think it is our right to have an ability to greet voters, to solicit signatures, to answer questions if you're running for a position in town, and I think this express electioneering at town meeting is not the right thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Right over here, sir.
Kelly Roney, two Howells Court. I think we've made some progress here. The, um, original 2017 bylaw, I think, was unconstitutional. The, um, amendment that Mr. Hegarty has proposed, I think, is progress. I agree that Freddie Gillespie is correct. The purpose of greeting citizens or voters should be stricken, and I move to amend the amendment to strike those words.
Is there a second? All right. Ms. Roney? Ms. Roney, need to come down? Put your amendment in writing, please. While we're waiting, let's go over here. Rose?
Um, Rose Morrow, Sixth Winchester Street. As a practical matter, I'm not going to get into constitutionality or, um, you know, free speech or that sort of thing, but I don't know that this, um, proposal is really as effective for, um, the people that are proposing it. As a person who's...
Ms. Moore, hold on. Are you speaking to Mr. Hegarty's amendment? Are you speaking to the original?
I'm speaking to Mr. Hegarty's.
Okay.
I actually think Mr. Hegarty's is a, um, is a good compromise because, basically, when you're doing political activity, you want to give people a chance to come and talk to you if they need more information. You also want to give people the opportunity to not talk to you if they don't want any more information, or if they just want to get into the building and vote. So I think Mr. Hegarty is, you know, I think it's, you know, good that he's... basically has an intermediate position where, you know, we have safety, we have ease of the voters to come in and not be disturbed, but we also have a... loosen up on the, um, basically, people can be out there to answer questions, to distribute material if they wish.
All right. Thank you. Tom, are you... Just going to get Ms. Roney's amendment on the screen. Okay. So on the floor before us is Ms. Roney's amendment to Mr. Hegarty's amendment that you see depicted on the screen, striking those words. Ms. Roney, do you want to speak to your amendment?
Yes, I'd like to. I think Freddie Gillespie's point about townspeople, citizens of the town who are running, this clarifies that they can't... that they may speak to and greet citizens and voters. I think it's pretty essential to have that language omitted. If you're concerned about a candidate for wider office... Um, if you're concerned about a candidate for wider office coming and greeting inside the building, that should be handled by normal procedures. They can't come on the floor without our permission. And so if we need to make a different case for state representative, somebody who's running for governor, that's fine, but, uh, certainly, certainly somebody who's running for local office can come in and greet citizens and voters, and we can't pretend to make a prohibition against that, which would be the black and white meaning of that term, that terminology.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Uh, Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. Uh, I, I think this needs a bit more work. Um, I'm not sure this is the right form to do it, because we still have left in the word "electioneering," and that's a pretty broad term, and so if I were to approach somebody, uh, at town meeting, you know, for some reason or another, in the hall, who is running for Board of Selectmen, and ask them about a particular position they wanted to take, they would tell me about the position they wanted to take, and I would form my opinions based on that, and that would be electioneering, because that's the nature of running for office. You meet with people, and you explain what it is you want to do, and what your positions are. That's electioneering. Uh, and, um, I, I fail to see how, A, we can prevent people from doing that, because that is the, one of the most sacred and fundamental free speech rights we have in this country. Uh, and secondly, this just needs a serious rethink. I, I understand the intent, but I think, uh, when it comes to liberty and, uh, the protection of our, our free speech rights, we really need to be as accommodating as is humanly possible. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may, may I speak to that?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Ms. Hanlon.
Can't hear you.
Is it, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Um, I fully support, uh, the last speaker's comment, and, um, I have a quote on that. "You may need, you need to be well-prepared to be a good citizen. You have to have the facts at hand, and you need to be able to marshal them in a rational, intelligent, and linear way." So who said that? Thomas Jefferson. So, I am with you in spirit on those comments. I think that, you know, I still support my article the way it's written, at least temporarily, until we can figure this out, but, um, I would ask you to support my article as written. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hegarty, anything new, please?
Yes, uh, Ms. Houlihan mentioned about other opportunities here, and previously she had suggested to me that, uh, we could, uh, put the cafeteria aside and allow that as a place for people to greet voters and such, and she mentioned that today. So I went out and measured the distance yesterday. If we caused people to go around the side of the building into the cafeteria, it would add an extra 525, 520 feet for people to walk in. In addition, we reduced the parking over there by, um, to a third of what we have out front. I'd also inquired of the school to see whether we could use some of the classrooms out here, and we can't. The classroom off to the side is an art room, it often has kids' displays. So, we're stuck with this L-shaped item, and I understand the comments, and this, yes, absolutely, this does restrict people's activities out there. But we're here for town meeting, and after we get by safety, the number one thing that we should be, I think, doing is we have to make materials available for people. And when this place gets crowded, sometimes it's not crowded at all, other times it's really crazy. And there were people that said they couldn't get through, they couldn't find things, and anyway, um, uh, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but the folks that are, the people that decide whether this is, uh, in violation of the state or federal constitution, there's the United Seas, uh, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, and they're the ones that opined that this was not. But the end of the day, it comes down to what this hall wants, and, uh, um, and, you know, I will imply whatever you want, I just think this is reasonable. And, uh, if you feel differently, then vote against this and vote in town.
All right, thank you. Next was Mr. Kalenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think, you know, one of the challenges, for me anyway, with this, and, and, and right now, we haven't had a, had support on this, uh, board for, uh, this article, and I'm not sure about this particular amendment, is where's that happy medium? For, you know, the resident who simply wants to come to town meeting, be able to walk from their car and enter the hall, um, and not have to go through whether it's, you know, there's nothing today, there could be that situation where there is the gauntlet. You know, there is, right now, it says, you know, "forbidden to enter a building," which to me then says, they could stand right at the entrance to the building, you just can't enter. So, the question is, could you? Could you foresee a situation, and is it possible then, that you could have five, 10, 15, maybe 50 advocates for a particular item at the door? I think the answer is yes. The way this is written is that you could have that electioneering, or the, or the requesting of signatures, and some people just want to walk in, and they'll see, you know, I could also envision they see a line. Now I've got, there's a line to get in, oh, everyone's signing something, is that a sign-in roster? You know, what is it? Oh, that's, you know, someone collecting signatures for something? And is there really that connection between the proponent of that petition and the person who just wants to enter the building? You know, is there that opportunity then to have that great discussion and debate about whether or not I want to sign this petition? Or do I just sign it because I, I just want to get in that building, I'm late? So, to me, one of the biggest challenges is where's that happy medium between the rights of, uh, of the proponent to, you know, of a, of an article or a petition, and the rights of the citizen who may just want to freely enter a building and come sit in the hall?
Yeah, and, and it's interesting you mention that, because that was one of the pieces of feedback we got when we consolidated voting to the, uh, Gymnasium at Trotter, and some people said they had to walk with gauntlet, because the, uh, the people with the, uh, campaign signs were in close proximity. My own personal opinion upon that is that people should be allowed to do anything they want in any quantity outside, uh, gauntlet or not, until it becomes a public safety hazard, or somebody's harassing, and then we have a police address it as whatever. I don't, my own opinion is that we shouldn't be restricting that behavior outside. And I just know, you know, was it, water seeps on level, whatever that phrase is? What I've noticed over time, and was exactly what Mrs. Houlihan was doing, she was standing on the sidewalk at the split rail fence, and that's where typically people stood last year. And there were people, uh, uh, up and down the sidewalk, and I think that's great. My problem was with the people that, my wife told me not to use the word "parked," but the person that just put themselves right smack in the middle, in the middle of the hallway, and I said, "You can't stand it, you gotta go." And, uh, my, my only concern is the safety piece inside of it. Outside, I, unless it's a public safety issue, I think we should let people do whatever they want to do, and if there is, we'll let the police address that as they would any other public safety. My only concern is, is the inside. I, I think outside, it'll work its way out. And honestly, quite honestly, uh, and I know this from experience, and we all know at the transfer station, when you see somebody that's aggressive getting signatures, they're shooting themselves in the foot. And if somebody's aggressive and they're difficult, well, shame on them.
Thank you. Mr. Cleary.
I'd like to indefinitely postpone Article 29 and all associated amendments.
Uh, well, the, the, what did you say? And also what?
All the amendments, all the proposed amendments.
So we have, we have, and we have an amendment to an amendment on the floor, and we're going to dispose of those one at a time. Uh, do you want to indefinitely postpone Ms. Roney's amendment?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, comment or question on Mr. Cleary's motion?
The downside to that is if you walk away from all this today, we're still in a situation that, me as the proponent of this thinks is wrong, that we're restricting activity within 150 feet of the building. So, so no matter what you do, if you're against the amendment, against this other thing, i- it's just wrong for us to restrict people's activity 150 feet outside. So I, I think one way or the other, we should resolve this tonight, at least as far as the 150-feet rule goes.
And I agree with that, Mr. Hegarty. Thank you.
Do you have a comment on Mr. Cleary's motion?
I'll withdraw my motion. Here's, here's my point, quickly. Hang on one second. Here's my point. I, I think Jim's hitting the nail on the head. You both bring good points. We have a, and we've had amendments to amendments. Obviously, we have a problem with what we do right now. But I think if we hurry and get this through tonight, we're going to get it wrong. You have a good idea, Jim, and I back you on that, but you bring some good points, along with Freddie, and you, Kelly. But these things need to be thought about. When I go back to the days before we did this, and what caused this to happen in the first place was we were being bombarded with politicians wanting to run for office statewide and everything, outside the door. We also had people, when you come in, who were supporting an article, we're going to vote on a town meeting, and handing us stuff, and they want to talk and debate with you right there, and we need to get people into this room to do the town's business. This has nothing to do with federal politics, state politics, I don't want to hear those people. We have warrant articles that we have to vote on, and we need to pay attention to that and that only. And that's what led to the original attempt to do this. Now, obviously, it's wrong, or we feel it's wrong, but let's not just hurry this thing through and have a quick debate here at town meeting and vote this thing in, and find out next year, oh, we got to amend it again. Because it is important, but you people got to realize, this is where you vote for how you live. It's the only place in this country you get to do that. You have no say anywhere else. So we want to make this right, and this should only be about, that building and everybody coming in here should only be about town, business, how we're going to live. If people don't like that, I mean, that's just the way it is. I understand the rights. Certainly, I'm here speaking, that is my rights, that's why I've come here for 50 years. Somebody gave up their life for me to have the right to do that, my father told me, "You are obligated to do this." So here I am. Hopefully, not to talk much more. But we need to get this right. I don't, I think Jim's, the closest I'm to it is what Jimmy's, Jim has brought forward. But if you guys are undecided, and you're not sure and comfortable with this, do not do this tonight, until we in fact are. And maybe that would mean you, sitting down with Jim, and coming into a good compromise, along with you, Kelly, who's been involved in town meeting many years.
Thank you very much.
We did, we did meet for three hours.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Challen.
Roger Challen, 29 Oak Hill Road. Uh, I'm supportive of Mr. Hegarty's attempt to control electioneering activity inside, uh, the buildings. Um, I find myself agreeing with Mr. Hamilton, and even after Mr. Roney's amendment, we're left with language that says, "We're expressly forbidding people to come into the hall for the purpose of electioneering." I don't even know how you can mandate, you know, uh, somebody coming in for the purpose of? How do you know they're coming in for the purpose of? So I think maybe the language does need some further work, even though I support the concept.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a comment?
Hold on a minute, please. All right, so we've had, we've had Ms. Hanlon, Mr. Roney, and Mr. Hegarty, uh, take the mic several times. Is there anyone else in the hall wants to speak to this?
Vote.
To these articles or these amendments? I'm going to give them each one more, very quickly, I'm going to start over here, Ms. Hanlon, very quickly, please.
Uh, I think the difficulties, and I very much appreciate the time that Mr. Hegarty and I spent together to work this out. Um, the fact of the matter is, in virtually all the towns and cities in the state, this is not regulated. And I did speak with Secretary Galvin's office, and they didn't know of any town that regulated these types of activities at town meeting. Yes, for elections, but not town meeting. So, um...
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roney?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Hegarty?
Okay, uh, I still think that, uh, I personally agree with this amendment, uh, the amended amendment, I like that, but at the end of the day, um, if the hall doesn't like this, I don't think you should walk away from this. If you don't like these things, and you're, you're confused, and you're tired, and it's getting late, and you want to wipe away from this, here's what I'm going to suggest. After you vote this down, I'm going to make another amendment, and my amendment is very simple, to strike and delete Chapter 41, 22 dot 1 in its entirety, period. If it's a sense of the hall that you don't want to do this, and you don't want to square this way tonight, let's not leave a bad law on the books. Okay? So, and again, I'm the one that sponsored in the first place. I think this is a good solution. If the hall disagrees, let's not walk away from this. Let's not leave a situation where we're, we're restricting people's activities outside, which we shouldn't be doing, so...
I support that, Mr. Hegarty.
I might add that the three of us are working on a compromise here, it seems pretty good.
All right. Uh, the motion on the floor is Ms. Roney's amendment to Mr. Hegarty's amendment. What?
Mr. Moderator, has a question?
Yes.
So, you can already see, I mean, we got good debate going back and forth, and Mr. Cleary, as I said earlier today, is often if not always right. He may very well be right again, that I think we can do this with the help of Town Council, um, working with Mr. Hegarty, working with the proponent of this, this article. I also, if, you got to put back up what you want to strike then in its entirety, and then we got to go through this whole exercise again of reviewing those words, and we could spend the next hour, two or three, talking about this one item, which isn't going to have any effect until we-
15 seconds, Dan, 15 seconds, that's all it'll take.
I don't know that it's 15, but right now, there's no support from the Board of Selectmen, I think, I don't know what the advisory is saying yet. Um, they, they were previously not supportive.
Do you support Mr. Hegarty's amendment? We have studied Mr. Roney's amendment.
Okay.
She said-
So, there's, there's some support for Mr. Hegarty's amendment, there, they haven't voted on the other amendment yet. It, it, I think we have an opportunity to get this right. I don't know that doing this now, quick, quickly, without the advice yet of Town Council, is a great idea.
You can always put it back. This will take 15 seconds, and not waste people's time tonight.
My article-
I'd like to speak.
All right, so, um, yeah, no, I don't think that's the suggestion. So, so, um, um, Mr. Barron, last word.
Yes, I'd like to move Ms. Roney's amended article for a vote, and then I would like to move Mr. Hegarty's amendment for a vote. So I want to move vote, and then I want to move Ms. Hanlon's article for a vote.
All right, thank you. We do that one at a time, and-
All right, let's start with Mr. Roney's amendment to be voted.
Mr. Barron, I got it.
Well, they said one at a time, so I'll wait.
I got it.
Let's get it voted.
Um, Mr. Roney's amendment requires a majority vote. Let's get the position of the Selectmen and Advisory on Mr. Roney's amendment, please, quickly.
Sorry to waste your time, folks. I just made an amendment to make on Mr. Roney.
Why do I have to do this? He's supposed to move it along. I shouldn't have to do this.
No.
I met with Karen three hours, and I thought- I want to be in Palm Springs at the pool.
Sorry to waste your time.
Can we get a vote?
We're going to take positions. Advisory supports, the amendment's on the screen. How about Selectmen?
Can't you see he's trying to push it?
On what? On what? Roney's or... Selectmen are split on Mr. Roney's amendment, two to two.
Okay, once again, I move for a vote.
So, Mr. Barron, please, I'll get to it.
Please do.
It requires a majority vote. You've heard the positions, all those in favor of Mr. Roney's amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. The motion passes.
Okay.
Um, all right, so now, Mr. Hegarty's amendment, as amended by Ms. Roney, is on the floor.
Mr. Moderator, I have an amendment to make, please.
Please go ahead.
And I filed it. Sorry, folks, I'm going to try to save the rest of the night, and I apologize that what should have been simple has become complicated and spent your time. I move to amend the amendment by striking, uh, Article 41 dot 22 dot 1 in its entirety.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Here's the end of the day. I, I still think that what we were trying to do made a lot of sense, but rather than waste your time and go through all this tonight, I don't want to leave a bad law on the books. We can always go back and address this next year. This lets you get your night on, and we'll move on, okay?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hegarty's amendment is on the floor to strike the bylaw in its entirety. We, we have a second. Um, yeah, I, I mean, basically, what's on the screen is now gone, which is simply striking the bylaws as it's written in the town code. Someone want to speak to Mr. Hegarty's newest amendment, Mr. Butler?
Um, John Butler, 4 Davis Road. I support the amendment. I would point out that the- I would point out that the town managed to govern itself for 300 and some odd years without that thing that Mr. Hegarty now says is broken, so let's take out what's broken and go, can't be horrible to go back to the way we all were here for all our lifetimes.
So I will move for a vote on Mr. Hegarty's amendment.
Anyone else on Mr. Hegarty's amendment? Ms. Houlihan.
Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford. I support the amendment as proposed by Mr. Hegarty.
All right, Mr. Hamilton.
I move the question.
I've moved it as well.
So the question's been moved on Mr. Hegarty's amendment. It is, it cuts off debate on Mr. Hegarty's amendment. It requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of moving the question, raise your cards. All opposed. All right, so the motion carries. We now go to a vote on Mr. Hegarty's amendment to strike the bylaw. All those in favor, this is a, this is a majority vote, all those in favor, all opposed. All right, now, Mr. Hegarty's amendment has been approved. Article 29 now is presented to us as Mr. Hegarty just amended, which means you're now about to vote to approve Article 29, which is to strike the entire bylaw. Yes, Mr. Butler?
The proponent initially said that there were to be, in her view, two votes under this Article 29 on the two separate sections, which is unusual for a citizen petition. And I wanted to know if you were in support of the notion that there were two parts to this which were voted separately.
No, and in fact, I didn't hear her say that, but the, the, the article, first of all, citizens' petitions obviously are, are not amendable, or, you know, wrong word. They cannot be changed. They're presented to the town clerk as written, and they're included in the warrant as written. But I'm, I'm not contemplating two different votes on this article.
I can speak to that, Mr. Roney.
Right now, you have two passed amendments.
Ms. Hanlon, what, what is your contention regarding two votes on this article?
There's no contention. It was just simply two pieces. In order to put through the second piece, you had to repeal the language of the first piece. But I'm completely satisfied with Mr. Hegarty's...
Yeah, to the extent, Mr. Butler, that that, that that was contemplated, I don't think it was. But to the extent it was, I think Mr. Hegarty's amendment wipes it out.
It's fine. I just wanted to clarify, because the presenter, the, the original motion, it was stated there would be two votes on the two different pieces, which I thought was procedurally unusual.
Thank you. All right, so now, we are voting on Article 29. It's a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 29, which is Mr. Hegarty's amendment to strike the bylaw, please raise your cards. All opposed. Motion carries. Article 29 is finished.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hegarty.
Article 30, Mr. Barron.
Okay, thank you. Article 30. This is a non-binding article. That means if you vote for it, it cannot be forced upon the town, it cannot be forced upon the Selectmen.
Mr. Barron, please put your motion on the floor.
Okay. I thought it was going to come up on the screen.
It's on the floor, it's on the screen. That's the motion.
Article 30, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following non-binding resolution or take any action thereon. Whereas the town of South Row has a demand for more recreation facilities and other recreation assets together than the town concurrently afford to purchase or support. Whereas it does not appear that significant additional town financial resources will be available in the near future to meet this demand for multiple fields for soccer, lacrosse, et cetera. Whereas there are...
As printed in the warrant. Save us some time, Mr. Barron.
Okay. It's printed in the warrant, so please read the warrant, and I will begin my presentation. Is that appropriate?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron.
My proposal is very simple, that the Selectmen create a Recreation Facilities Committee to identify opportunities for shared use of recreation facilities with other towns or organizations, in order to expand our residents' access to recreation facilities as, at a reasonable cost that we can afford. My primary idea is the fractional or shared use of expensive assets and a sound economic idea with a long list of real-world successes, including fractional jet aircraft use, vacation time sharing and living units, and cloud storage such as you have with Amazon Web Services. My point is that for the town generally, and for this warrant article specifically, the Recreation Committee, Commission should seriously explore this approach, as opposed to the traditional approach of buying and owning all of these recreation facilities for town residents' use. I did reach out to the Recreation Commission. They invited me, and they were very nice and spoke to me, and I discussed this proposal with them. I appreciated their candid feedback, and I'd like to address a few of the concerns that they expressed. I expect that you will hear from the Recreation Commission that I don't understand the Rec. Commission activities and the scheduling complexities. That is certainly correct. They are the experts, and I don't claim to know any of the operating details as well as they do. But that isn't the point. I expect that you will hear from the Rec. Commission that it is less convenient for town residents to travel to other towns to use shared recreation facilities. That is certainly correct, but that is only part of the picture. I made a trip, one and a half miles from the South Row border with Marlboro, and I went up to the Four Kicks facility in Marlboro, and as I say, it was only one and a half miles from the South Row line. I expect that you will hear from the Rec. Commission that outside groups like Four Kicks and Marlboro have no desirable times available, and rental rates are too expensive. I physically went and spoke to the people at Four Kicks. I was told by the Recreation Commission, they wouldn't have time for South Row, and especially, they needed space for nine-year-olds, 10-year-olds, 11-year-olds. Four Kicks indicated to me, they had plenty of space, in particular for the smaller fields, and it was physically inside the building with a cover, so that weather would not be an issue. I was told by the Rec. Commission on a Saturday, if they have rain, bad weather, winds, they have to cancel. If it's done at Four Kicks, they could go on with their regular scheduling. We don't have to buy the Four Kicks fields, you rent them. I expect that you will hear from the Rec. Commission that the Rec. Commission is doing this already or should be doing this. I don't disagree that the Rec. Commission should have been doing this. I'd simply point out that I can't identify a single example over the past 20-plus years of any significant recreation facility sharing of the type I am proposing that the new committee explore. So it seems to me that it's worth trying what I am proposing to get this activity moving where no movement has occurred. I believe, let's do something. Why should we do this? In a perfect world with the Rec. Commission, it appears to prefer the town owns and operates all of the local recreational... I just want to move this. No. All right, I'm trying to move to another page, folks, but it's not doing it. Perhaps I, there we go. Thank you. Necessary to meet the demands of town residents for all types of recreational facilities with sufficient playing field and facility capacity, so that everyone can practice and play at times that are convenient for them. That is, no 6:00 AM soccer practice or games. And in this case, we, the taxpayers, pay for all of this. I agree that it's a wonderful objective, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist to determine the problem with this. We can't afford it. I believe that we might be able to afford significant progress toward expanded recreation opportunities through fractional or shared use, and that is what I'm proposing we explore. I am, in fact, trying to make it possible for the Rec. Commission to provide more recreation, not less, opportunities for all of us, young and old, and not just students in school, at a cost we can afford. I'm on their side, so I'm disappointed that they have resisted my proposal and went so far in their January 6 minutes to ask the attorney for the town to review this proposal to make sure it was properly written. It's not even binding. They, they just could have let it go. I ask everyone to vote for this, and I ask the Selectmen to implement this if it passes. And a few other notes. This is not redundancy. This would be a separate committee that would strictly explore opportunities for how we can share facilities with other towns, how we can rent space at places like Four Kicks, et cetera. I will also mention, the 9/11 field was returned with minimal drainage work, and it cost over $600,000 to build. Fayetteville Park started under $1,000, and I believe it ended up somewhere in the $300,000 range. And one last comment, I saw an article in the newspaper that a private women's soccer organization was looking at the possibility of buying land in South Row near the 495 Route 9 area. Should that happen, we would have a tremendous accessibility, I believe, if they, we gave them the zoning, et cetera, they wanted, for all kinds of field practice. So I ask you folks to look into this and vote for it today, and see if we can come up with some ways to save money. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Rec. Commission. There you are. Sir, please. If you could yield the podium, Mr. Barron. Thank you.
Why is, is this a new program where they do a presentation with me? I've never seen this.
No, we, we discuss and debate your article, and they are...
Usually from the floor. I'd prefer it from the floor, please.
You know what? He's going to take the podium, Mr. Barron. Thank you, though.
I haven't seen this before.
I guess we're breaking new ground tonight.
I guess so.
First of all, I want to mention that, as Mr. Barron mentioned, we appreciated him coming to one of our meetings to outline his proposal. Our meetings are all open to the public, and we appreciate those who come out and share ideas with us to better improve recreation for the town. I'll also mention, it, it didn't happen during a snowstorm. After our discussion, the Recreation Commission, after our discussion with Mr. Barron, the Commission had a discussion and agreed to not support this agenda, or this item, this warrant article. What we've done here is outline those groups and organizations that we already presently share space with, both in town and within other communities, both in terms of field utilization, in terms of skiing opportunities. We have folks who come in to help our children, if you've come in to see the theater presentations in the spring and the fall. You'll notice that many of these are already on Mr. Barron's slide presentation. We're already engaged with them, we're already working with them. We also have engaged, and what's not reflected here is, when opportunities arise in town where there could be field utilization, he mentioned the opportunity potentially with the women's sports organization. We have reached out and are already in contact with that particular group. There's also been other instances where, if space is opened up, members of the Commission or the Recreation Director has already been in discussion with those folks, and if appropriate, it continues. Unfortunately, not every space is appropriate for recreational use, and in some cases, it doesn't work out. But the effort is applied. We feel that that's where there is a redundancy with this proposal. It is the responsibility of the Director of Recreation to be actively engaged and seek out these opportunities, and for the Recreation Commission to be involved in the evaluation and pushing forward those that make sense for the town. Thus far, we've been fortunate, as a town, that almost all of our recreational facilities have been donated, or have cost the town nothing to acquire. So we haven't actually had to go off and look for funds to acquire new land, and for the most part, our, our requests have been to support ongoing maintenance or repairs. The last item I'll mention is that, one of the other items that Mr. Barron referred to was active engagement with other organizations in the town to look for and seek out new opportunities. And so a couple of those, I mean, I've been on the board now for six months. I've met with Advisory twice. We've been to the Board of Selectmen. Our Recreation Director has met, or has had conversations with the Superintendent of Schools. Members of the Board met with St. Mark's to discuss topics as well. And we've also been off to, to meet with the Planning Board as well. So there is active engagement with the Board and with the Recreation Director across the town, doing all the items that Mr. Barron is already, is suggesting are already being handled in the group. So in closing, again, it is the position of Recreation Commission that this article warrant should not be supported.
Mr. Shea.
Brian Shea, 17, Pine Cone Lane, speaking as, as an individual. I also do not support this article and urge the hall not to support. Just to follow up on the comments just made, I coached 14 or 15 years in South Row youth soccer. My final two seasons, my home games, one season was Ashland, the other was at the new St. Mark's turf field. So, Mr. Barron, those are two examples of, of outreach that has happened. I think a lot of what is written in this article is the responsibility of the Recreation Commission, and I do not support it. Thank you.
I would also like to speak as I continue this presentation...
No, Mr. Barron, the, the debate is on the floor now. I'll recognize you after everybody's had a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes. Good evening. Joe Kaiservich, 24, Sadie Hut Lane. I wish to comment on this article from three perspectives. Number one, as the former chairman of the Recreation Facilities Committee, which completed a very thorough master plan for the town of South Row in 1999. Number two, just as Mr. Shea mentioned, as a former youth coach in town, coached just about every sport imaginable. And finally, as the owner and operator of a club lacrosse program, Central Mass Club Lacrosse, for nine years. And just to give you an idea of some of the, the whereabouts, you know, how, how do you go about renting space? The neighboring towns of Marlboro, Hopkinton, West Row, Shusry have all built turf fields, some, two, two fields per town in the last three to four years. It's just common sense that they're going to give their, their athletes, whether it's high school, middle school, youth athletes, first priority, you know, on their fields. We don't want our kids going to Hopkinton for the Wednesday 8 to 9 p.m. squat to play youth soccer. The words of the Hopkinton Booster Club Chairman, when they were in the middle of their fundraising, sums it up very nicely. "This turf field will dramatically increase the usage hours for Hopkinton High School and Hopkinton Middle School athletes." Co-op, it, it already exists. It's already going on. A typical youth soccer team in, in South Row will play 10 games in a season. You play five home games, you play five away games at different towns. Same thing for basketball. You play five home games, you play five away games. So the cooperative nature that is being proposed, it already exists. Teamworks, okay? Now, we're going to get into the specifics. Yes, there might be room, additional space, but you have to pay well in advance. Four Kicks is an extremely popular place. It's one thing to run a club lacrosse program where you have players on the contract, you have money up front in your bank account to pay for this rental, you know, months ahead of time, as is requested, as is demanded. Put yourself in the place of, say, the chairman of South Row youth soccer. You've, you've got your registration going until Wednesday, uh, until February, sorry, for, for the spring season, and now you're going, now you've got your money in your bank account, you call up Teamworks, sorry, you know, that, that time is already allocated. It puts a tremendous amount of pressure on, on the youth sports programs. St. Mark's. When I ran my club program, had a wonderful experience with the people at St. Mark's. They were cordial, they were accommodating, extremely professional. They had a, a website that was very easy to navigate. They made it very clear that between their sports programs, practices, and games, and just keeping some space open for their kids to go over there, throw a frisbee around, kick a soccer ball around. In other words, they couldn't max out the facility from a, from a rental perspective. The, these are all, you know, realities. And finally, going back to the... all, you know, realities. Um, and finally, going back to the, uh, 1999, 1999, uh, Recreation Master Plan. Ironically, that plan took us to the year 2017, that if certain facilities came online, 9/11 Memorial Field, Kalander Field, Lumblad Field, that given the population and the number of practices and games per team, we would have adequate facilities. Well, the thing that's changed is the projected K-8 population has reduced by approximately 25%. That would suggest, and, and all those facilities came online, that would suggest that if, if they're properly maintained, you would have enough facilities. That's not the case. It, they're not being properly maintained. That's where the money needs to go to. And finally, as a taxpayer, you get police and fire protection, you get your, your roads plowed, you get, uh, a nice library, you got wonderful schools, you got a senior center. To suggest that as a taxpayer, I have to travel out of town and pay an additional fee, I, I, I really think that's very distressing. Um, as a member of the Rec Commission stated, let the Commission do their job, okay? That's their job, to explore other opportunities, and it's already being, it's already taking place.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Cook.
Advisory does not support this article by a vote of one to five, but to make clear why we don't. Uh, we support the spirit of what Mr. Barron is proposing. We like the idea of creative solutions to our problems, um, as far as supplying enough fields to, to do what we need to do. Our problem is, we don't want another committee. We think this is a Rec Commission's purview. This is their job. We already have many committees that don't have people on them, and they should, so we're having trouble, um, staffing the committees in and in place, so we don't think we need to add another committee. We have a Commission in place that is extremely competent, that is doing a great job, that we feel that this is their purview and should remain their purview.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Uh, John Butler, 4 Davis Road. Can we move the question?
I have another comment.
Mr. Butler has moved the question, um, receives a second. If we vote to move the question, it cuts off all debate. It requires a two-thirds vote. Um, all those in favor-
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I told you I wanted to have another comment before you moved the vote.
All those opposed. Motion to move the question carries. Mr. Barron, when the motion is made, you should know very well what a motion to move the question means.
I asked you if I could speak before, and you said after the other gentleman who spoke.
All right. So, now, we move to a vote on the-
You're not gonna let me speak?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. We moved the question. That's how it works.
I object to that, and I appeal from the ruling of the Moderator's chair.
All those in favor of Article 30-
I said, I appealed that.
It's a majority vote. Please raise your hand.
I appealed that.
All those in favor of Article 30, please raise your cards.
But I appealed this.
All those opposed. Article 30 fails. Article 31, Mr. Wyshin.
Ladies and gentlemen, you will be delighted to hear that there is no presentation with this article.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I have a question, if I may.
Can you, you need to put your motion on the floor.
Okay. Uh, Article 31, to determine if the town of Southborough will vote to amend Town Code Article 10, Sections 27 to 26B by adding a new section B8 as written in the warrant.
Is there a second? There's been a second. Go ahead, Mr. Wyshin.
Um, in conversations with the town clerk earlier, uh, we've had a suggestion to amend this, and so my question is, should we do the amendment first, or should I just do my quick explanation first?
Do a quick explanation first, please.
Um, this article arose from a fact that during the last election cycle, I wanted to find out what the attendance record of the incumbent office holder, elected office holders was. And in doing so, um, I wrote over to the town administrator, and the answer was that, um, one has to actually go look, meeting by meeting, for the selectmen, for the school board, for the library trustees, for all the elected officials, even though this is, data is collected. And I think it's a transparency issue in town government that since this data is easily collected, it's collected for every meeting, it's no more complicated than putting this into an Excel spreadsheet and putting it in a central location. It is essential that we, essentially, as the employers of these elected officials, in the same way that employer would wanna know what the attendance rate of their employee is, we would like to know who's actually showing up to work. And the fact that this was so difficult to do and that the onus is on the voter, um, seems unfair. And that is the entire, uh, proposition. The amendment is to, uh, move to the amendment-
Hold on, hold on. Who's, who's making the amendment?
Uh, I have made the amendment.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, you, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I move to amend the main motion under Article 31 by striking the words "town administrator" and substituting the words "town clerk." Um, this was-
Does that receive a second? All right, go ahead, Mr. Wyshin.
This was in conjunction, in conversation, um, with Mr. Hegarty, that he, uh, would be happy to do this and that would probably be the more appropriate official.
Any comment or concern about the amendment to, uh, Mr. Wyshin's motion, uh, having, charging the town clerk instead of the town administrator with this, um, just on this amendment? Anything? Mr.?
Right here.
Go ahead, sir.
Paul Desmond, 5 Pine Cone Lane. I'm, uh, Chairman of the Southborough School Committee as well as a member of the Regional School Committee. These are my opinions.
Well, hold on, sir. Let me stop you. Right now, we're just talking about whether the clerk or the administrator should do this, not whether we should do it at all. So, limited to that, I'll take comments, and then we'll get to, I'll get, you go first.
Uh, Al Hamilton, Pine Hill Road. Uh, I understand the purpose of making the town clerk, uh, the keeper of these records since he's the keeper of the minutes. Uh, my question, I think, to the town clerk is, uh, this article is written in such a way as it would also pertain to the school committee, and, um, does he keep the records for those and the attendance records for those, those folks?
Mr. Hegarty.
You wanna come up here?
Mr. Hamilton, we currently don't keep the records for the, uh, school committee, but it's an easy thing for us to do. Uh, I can accomplish this, uh, simply by, uh, getting the data off their website or literally off the TV, 'cause they're, they're, it's a very easy fix. We can, if the Hall wants this to be done, I can do it very simply.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney, do you wanna speak to the amendment?
No, sir.
Okay, so, um, to the amendment, Mr. Kalenda?
To the amendment. So, part of the amendment, then, would require the town clerk, then, to basically take attendance, keep attendance records of, uh, for every meeting. I, I don't know how the town clerk is gonna ascertain, uh, such meetings that the member was eligible to attend. How are you gonna, uh, ascertain whether or not someone was eligible, Mr. Hegarty?
I think, Mr. Kalenda, I think that goes to the main motion. I mean, same question with regard to the district.
But it's now his, so he has to be able to do this. I don't know how he's gonna do that, ascertain how someone is eligible to attend a meeting.
Right, but my point is, can Mr. Purple do that any easier?
I, it's no longer, I would've asked Mr. Purple that as well, but now I, now I have to ask the clerk, how is he gonna ascertain whether or not someone's eligible?
I would interpret that, that if somebody is, uh, properly elected and sworn and assumes office and is sworn into the committee, the person is eligible to attend all the meetings unless they have to recuse themselves from the committee. Unless there's a legal impediment to prevent them from participating in the meeting, they're eligible to attend.
Um, Counsel, you wanna just, go ahead.
What, what the town clerk said is absolutely correct in terms of how you would determine eligibility.
All right. Sir, about the amendment or about the main article?
About the amendment. It's also a question, uh, it's also, this is, uh, Will Warren, 6 Sunrise Drive. Uh, what's the definition of attendance? Is it the first 10 minutes? Is it the whole meeting?
All right.
Is it the last 50 minutes?
Okay, that's, that's going to the main article. That's not about the amendment. So, stick close. We'll get, we'll, we'll come back to that. Um, all right, Mr., um, Mr. Wyshin's amendment, uh, requires a majority vote. Um, all those in favor of the amendment to switch administrator to clerk, please raise your cards. All opposed. All right, so that amendment carries, and now we're back to the main motion. Uh, Mr. Desmond, you were first.
Thank you. Paul Desmond, 5 Pine Cone Lane, uh, Chairman of the School Committee as well as a member of the Regional School Committee, uh, speaking on my own behalf here. First, it's, it's great that, uh, the town clerk is, is offering to take on this administration work, but I suspect it's gonna be more than he thinks, and, um, sensitive to the, um, time of our central office. I'm not sure if everyone realizes this, but we have one central office that serves three school committees and three, um, school districts, really, Southborough, Northborough, as well as the high school. And I, I would think, at some level, they're gonna be, have to be involved in this and forwarding to him who's at what meetings. And the other thing is, in terms of, that, that the question of what's, who's eligible for a meeting is a good one, because in addition to the monthly meetings that we have, there's a whole slew of subcommittee meetings. And, you know, usually, there's like two members of the committee that are on each subcommittee, but everyone is eligible to attend all those meetings. And I'm sure Ms. Hegarty really doesn't have a lot of insight into that, so again, it's gonna be a lot of paperwork. And the other thing is, to what end? So, I understand that, you know, you had a problem, uh, with finding out who's attending what meetings, but, you know, and I've been on the school committee now for almost eight years. In that time, I think there's been two contested elections. So, it seems to me we should be encouraging participation in these things, and, uh, this is certainly gonna discourage it, I would think. It just seems to me like it's, we're setting ourselves up for some unintended consequences, so I would urge folks to vote against this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. Um, Lisa Brascio, 13 Oregon Road. Um, first, the Board of Selectmen does not support this article. Um, next, my comments are my own. The Board hasn't had this discussion. I don't support this article as a whole. Putting the attendance information in the annual report of each board committee or commission, I do support. Asking town staff to monitor and track on a daily or weekly basis, attendance information to then update and post online, in my opinion, is a poor use of taxpayer monies, when you, as a citizen, currently have access to this information, if you so choose, to get it via the minutes section for every board committee, commission posted on the town website. Also, for reference, there are nine boards and committees, I understand, that would be affected by this, um, averaging 192 meetings over the last three years. So, this isn't a small undertaking by any task. Um, it's asking a lot, and, Mr. Hegarty, I, I do appreciate you trying to find a solution, um, and find a way to do this, but I certainly think, um, for the taxpayer, um, there's better use of town monies, um, when this is readily available to the public. So, for these reasons, I personally do not support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney.
Uh, John Rooney, Edgewood Road. Um, uh, my objection, um, is not the compiling of the information and the access to the citizens who come to Town Hall to ask for it. My, my objection is the publication in the annual town report. And the reason from that position is that's, we have a lot of great people who volunteer, and on occasion, people cannot make meetings or, uh, more tragically, uh, get ill and can't make the meetings. They make every effort to get there, but they just can't make the meetings. And I don't think it should then be published in an annual report to be accessed forever. Uh, I, I have no problem with the, uh, information being available to the residents at Town Hall in a, on a compilation, but the publication in an annual report, uh, to show that someone didn't show up to his or her meetings because of circumstances perhaps beyond their control, which is being dealt a bad, a set of cards in life. I, I just don't support the publication in the annual town report.
Thank you. Right here, sir.
Um, Will Warren, 6 Sunrise Drive. Um, I'm on, uh, a couple different committees, and I know that we meet sometimes for two hours plus. My question would be, you know, what is the definition of attendance? Is it attending the entire meeting? Uh, if it's not that, then who would make the determination that a member had actually attended? Because it could be arranged ahead of time that the member would attend the first 15 minutes or with the last 15 minutes, because that's where, you know, they're really needed on a particular issue and, uh, the rest of the committee would be able to do what they needed to do without them the rest of the time.
Thank you. Mr. Hegarty.
Jim Hegarty, Town Clerk. I just wanna make sure the audience understands I don't take a position in favor or in opposition of this article. It just makes sense that if you're gonna tag somebody with responsibility, it makes sense that it goes through my office.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jessica Devan, 1 Pine Cone Lane. I'm also on the school committee, but I'm just speaking for myself. I have a question. Paul brought up the idea of subcommittees. Would you, like, for example, I'm eligible to go to every single school committee meeting, but I'm only on certain subcommittees, so would you figure out a way to designate that? Because it's not expected on the school committee that I would go to every single other subcommittee meeting. So, would, how would you make that clear?
I, of course, I'm, I'm awful. Mike, oh, there we are. Um, again, I would rely on what, uh, Town Council has in terms of the definition of eligibility. And just in general, in terms of rebuttal, I, I think the complications of this are being vastly overstated. I mean, the reporting mechanism these days is one line in an Excel spreadsheet that is then published. And while I understand that there are issues why people cannot attend, deaths in the family, illness, et cetera, as an informed voter, if someone is running for office as an incumbent, you want to know whether or not they've attended. And it just, it seems common sense to me, and it seems very strange that, that we make this so difficult. I think this is a question of transparency in town government, and we have a particular problem with that here in Southborough. You may have read, uh, at the recent news reports that we are the last in terms of, uh, public information access. So, I don't think we need to make this more difficult for our townsfolk to get this really simple piece of information. I think we're all able to judge when illness or other issues have been the cause.
Thank you. Ms. Jazinski.
Dory Anjosinski, 33 Presidential Drive, speaking as a taxpayer. I'm not really unders- I'm, I'm not really sure why we need this information. I'm a volunteer on three boards. I attend my meetings. I'm not worried about it. This is coming across to me as almost a witch hunt, that, that somebody's looking to try to go after somebody who, A, they don't like, or B, misses meetings, or, this doesn't make any sense that you need that. You, if you wanna know what somebody's attendance record is, look at the minutes. There's no reason that the taxpayer should have to pay the employees to babysit or keep a record of something that's irrelevant. What's the purpose of that? What do you need that information for? What are you gonna do with that information? I do not support this article. I just think it's a total waste of time. You have the capability of looking up the attendance yourself in the minutes. There's no reason to spend taxpayer dollars to put all this information together for you because you still wanna spend the time. I, I don't understand this. I think it's a waste of time.
Thank you. Mr. Cleary.
Mr. Moderator, move the question.
Mr. Cleary has moved the question. It's received a second. If we pass this motion, it cuts off all debate. It requires a two-thirds vote, uh, two-thirds vote. To do so, all in favor of moving the question, raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed. Clerk, two-thirds majority. So, now that brings the, uh, original article to the floor. Um, this requires a majority vote. Um, all in favor of Article 31, please raise your cards. All opposed. Motion fails. We're moving to Article 32, and before we put the motion on the floor, um, I need to explain that because Article 32, uh, the subject matter of Article 32 impacts the potential ability of the moderator to make appointments, I am gonna recuse myself from, um, moderating this article, and I'm gonna ask the clerk, Mr. Hegarty, to come up and do that for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Article 32, votes to amend the language associated with Advisory Committee. The intent of this article is to give you, the audience...
Excuse me, Ms. Hanlon.
Yes.
Would you move the article, please, first?
I move to see if the town will vote to repeal Town Code Section 9-12, appointment of Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Secretary of the Advisory Committee, which reads as follows. Said Advisory Committee shall choose from its membership Chairman and Secretary. And to see if the town will vote to replace Section 9-12 above with the following new section, 9-12, as written in the warrant. And three, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 9-12, consistent with number two above, to read as written in the warrant. And to see if the town will vote to amend Section 9-11, consistent with number two above, to read as written in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hanlon.
Oops. Okay, well, this is one bylaw, obviously, with a few voting actions, but the intent of this article is to give the taxpayers a voice and a vote, and a say on who is on this important committee. This is your meeting, town meeting, and the current meeting structure, BOS and Advisory influence, of course, and have their say, but town meeting is a meeting for the taxpayers, and whereby each individual in this room has an equal say. So, home rule rules.
Excuse me, Ms. Hanlon.
Yes.
We've neglected a parliamentary procedural issue.
Okay.
There needs to be a motion to appoint me as the Assistant Moderator, please.
No.
Is there a second for that, please?
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Okay? And I have been sworn in by the Assistant Town Clerk. Sorry about that. I should have done the beginning. Please continue.
Thank you. So, there's nothing personal about this. This is just a balance of power consideration. I'm a little disappointed that Advisory wasn't for this, because I so admire the people on Advisory, as well as BOS. So, I'm afraid that what you will hear is, "We like it the way it is," or, "I'm not running." That's fine, because you can still volunteer to the moderator. We want to self-appoint. We know who can fall into one slot. Well, that may well be true, but the other consideration is about balance and checks and balances, and having the voters have a say about at least a few of the slots on this nine-person committee. So, what does Advisory do? Chapter 39, Section 16 of the MGL states that every town shall have an advisory or finance committee for the purpose of making reports or recommendations to the town. Towns with a valuation of a million dollars or more must create a finance committee, and the finance committee's prime responsibility is to make recommendations on all financial matters to town meeting. And this quote is actually from an excellent piece that's posted on the town website, but with regard to the Advisory Committee, but it says, "Without finance committee being independent of review, town meeting would be at a severe handicap in voting on financial matters when all the recommendations are coming from one source. Separation of powers was designed by our founding fathers for a reason defended." Why amend the advisory language? Town moderator, that position, currently appoints all nine positions. Advisory, AKA Finance, sets the budget. It's one of the most important committees in town. These actions give a vote and a voice to the taxpayers by electing the top three slots, Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary. And then, really, the point and goal of this entire proposed article is to, as with any election, the election process itself versus straight-up appointment is less susceptible to political influence and therefore allows for independence in process and results. So, the motion on Article 32, Part One, I think was already stated. Part Three. This is standard for any board, really, in terms of progression. In turn... Oops. Uh-oh. I did it, Mr. IT man. There we go. Let's see. And Part Four.
Okay, let me make an observation here. This is an unusual citizen's petition, unusual article. Can you hear me now? Okay. This is, I just want to point something out to the audience. This is an unusual article, and that it really is four articles combined into one. So, I'm just going to point that out as we get further along in the conversation, before we take any votes on this. I will be clear to tell you what a yes vote will mean, what a no vote will mean, okay? Mr. Butler, you were first. The microphone.
John Butler, Ford Davis Road. I think the present setup is good, and I don't think that there has been any presentation of a problem to be solved. The, what we have now at the front table, which is really the group of people who decide about budgets and spending, which is the biggest issue, is that we have a balance of people who are appointed and elected. There are many people who don't want to run for election, but may be very capable and able to serve the town. And I served for 30 years or so in various capacities continuously for the town, and 20 or so years on Advisory Committee. And I think it's very important that the Advisory Committee continue to be an appointed board while the Board of Selectmen be an elected board. Furthermore, I would note in the particulars of this that we could have a chairperson who has no experience with the Advisory Committee's work suddenly become a new, have a new person commit as chair without any experience of how they operate. It's a, this is flawed in many ways. It's not the way to change our government. This is a significant change to government. Doing this through citizen petition out of the blue is not the way to do it. We've had study committees looking at town structure, come through, review many, many possible issues, bring them forward. We've debated them at hearings and other settings. This is not the way to do this. This is an ill-conceived action that solves no problem. So, I urge you to defeat it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler has spoken in opposition to the article. Is there anyone at the microphone that would like to speak in favor of the article? Mr. Challen, are you speaking in favor?
No.
You're speaking in favor.
I am.
To balance the debate, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's a great article.
Would you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you identify yourself, please?
Jack Barron, Sadie Henley. I think it's a great article. I think recently, if I'm not mistaken, the Chairman and the Vice Chairman of the Advisory Committee got up and resigned, I believe within a week or two of each other, and left the committee rudderless temporarily. I don't know the real reasons they both left. You hear different rumors. I think with elected people, you might get a much better kind of vote where they wouldn't feel they are at the mercy of the moderator. So, I am very much in favor of it. I believe Wellesley and Brookline both used this method. Am I correct? I'm not. What other towns, Ms. Hanlon, use this method?
I understand that there are some. The question that's come to me has been, is it even possible to have elected versus appointed? And the answer from...
Pardon me. The questions are through the moderator. What is your question, sir?
My question is, what other towns currently have this program that they elect some of the Advisory?
Okay, hold that thought for one second, please. Mr. Barron, I can't give you the exact answer for all 321 cities and towns in Massachusetts, but I did query all of the town clerks in those 321 cities, and we had a 38% response rate, and only one indicated that they had an elected finance or advisory committee.
Okay, do you recall who that was?
It was one of the small towns in western Massachusetts.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. You have to go to the microphone, but Mr. Challen is next. Go, please.
Roger Challen, 29 Oak Hill Road. When Mr. Butler said he had served for 30 years in various capacities and boards and committees, I wasn't sure whether I wanted to say 29 or 31, because I wasn't sure I wanted it to be more or less, but approximately the same for me, in both elected and appointed positions. I agree with Mr. Butler that this motion is flawed, and specifically, it's flawed because for anyone that's ever served on any board or committee, I have yet to even hear of one where the chairman was not selected, or the vice chairman, was not selected by the committee members themselves. To do, other than that, would be just impossible to deal with. And I suspect that the one example of the city or town that elected their finance committee, that finance committee also chose their own chairman or vice chairman. So, I am not in favor of this motion, this article.
Thank you, Mr. Challen. Is there anyone at the microphone that would like to speak in favor of the article? Okay. Ms. Cook.
Kathy Cook, Chair of the current Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee did not support this article with a unanimous vote of zero to six. We invited Ms. Hanlon to come before Advisory to explain to us what her rationale was for her article, and she did. We had a nice meeting. One of the premises that she had that night, as far as why she thought this was appropriate, was that she thought there was, and this is pretty much a direct quote, a lot of retired CEOs in Southborough who would jump at the chance to be elected to the Advisory Committee. We explained to her that night that we didn't agree with that, that it's hard enough to get someone to be on Advisory, much less have to go through an election. So, we didn't understand why she thought it would be, there would be more people in that pool to be elected than there would be in the pool to be appointed. Advisory is supposed to have nine people on it. You can count what we have tonight. We've got six. So, we're already short three people. So, to change this so that you would have three people elected, six people appointed, does not make sense to us all. We think we'd have less people, not more people. Second, as far as electing the officers, to be the Chair or Vice Chair or Secretary of Advisory, you need experience. You can't just come in with knowing nothing about Advisory, knowing nothing about the town, and expect to be effective as an officer, especially Chair. It takes a long time to understand this town's budget. I mean, I've been doing this for a long, long time, and I still learn things every day about the budget process. So, to rely on someone possibly with no experience, I think, would be a disaster. Third, and just to reiterate, Mr. Hagerty, so we asked Mr. Hagerty to poll the other towns in Massachusetts to see who else is doing it. I just want to make it clear. The one that he found is the only one that does the combined appointment election. So, there are others that have elections, there's completely, there's others that have appointments, but there's only one that does the electing and appointing at the same time. So, for those three reasons, Advisory is pretty adamantly opposed to this article.
Mr. Hagerty, may I respond to some of those points?
Sure. Ms. Hanlon, go ahead, please.
Thank you. As for the comment about retired CEOs, that's actually not accurate. That was a comment made about a suggestion as to a possible demographic of who might be able to step onto or run for Advisory. As far as having only six members, my understanding from you that night was that that was self-imposed, that you weren't going ahead and reappointing the other three people, I guess, right away while we're in the budget process. I'm not clear why that would not be a prudent thing to do, as it would give them an opportunity to still get up to speed. And then, with regard to having people very inexperienced jumping on, I vehemently disagree with that point. We had two pretty experienced people removed for, I can't explain why, what the reasons would be. One of them is Mr. Stivers, who's here tonight, very, very experienced. He's experienced with, you know, six and seven-figure budgets. So, this is the reason I'm standing here tonight, for that very reason, that unfortunately, this process has turned, in my opinion, a little bit political and not based on merits, meaning the qualifications of the people who step forward, who are perfectly qualified to sit in those seats, including Mrs. Stivers and others. So, again, I'm just a citizen volunteer myself, but that was and is the reason I'm standing here.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton.
Al Hamilton, Pine Hill Road. Like Mr. Challen and Mr. Butler, I'm a former member of Advisory and a former Chair of Advisory. It is certainly true, and I did study this myself, that there are alternative means of appointing Advisory Committee members. There are many towns where the town meeting elects them, and there are many towns where the Board of Selectmen appoint some or all of the members. And so, the method of having the moderator, which I believe is the most common method, is not the only method of appointing members of Advisory. I also have some modest financial experience, and I do mean modest, outside of the public sector and the private sector. And one thing I learned in my tenure was that public sector accounting is not like private sector accounting, unfortunately. The whole concepts of accruals just really makes no sense. Depreciation makes no sense. And it really does take particularly for, there is a learning curve. I, you know, I went through it, and I think most of the people who sit on Advisory went through it. I think if you have a problem with the way that the folks on the Advisory Committee, who work very hard on our behalf, are appointed, then, quite frankly, your problem is with the moderator, and you should settle that at the ballot box.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Sir, you're next.
George McClelland, 12 Reservoir Drive. I was also Chair of the Advisory Board. And if you think about the implications of the proposal, what you have is a divided Advisory Board. You've got six people who are appointed by the moderator, and then, you've got three elected positions. They come on the board in a very different fashion. I think that's going to cause some friction, because if I were appointed, I would clearly want to have a solid voice in terms of where the Advisory Board goes and what it says. I worry that that friction would be a problem. I, like the speaker before me, believe that there's never been, at least in my experience, a problem in terms of independence. The independence issue is really the moderator. And I don't know whether or not the people that are here... And I don't know whether or not the people that are here have the same impression I have, but we have a very strong moderator. We have somebody who I believe is in the shoes of John Wilson, which I worked with, or whom I worked with for about 24 years. He's the person who is responsible for the quality of the advisory board. And if I'm an advisory board member, I want to make sure, because I work very hard, I want to make sure that the person that is leading my board, that I have a say in who that is. So I'm opposed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coleri, you were next, sir.
Jim Coleri, 51 Central Street. Ladies and gentlemen, it ain't broke, don't fix it. Mr. Moderator, move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Coleri. Mrs. Samina was at the microphone. I will take his comment, and that will be the last one, please.
Mr. Stivers was not removed. His term was up, he was not reappointed. I'm sorry you brought his name up, it was certainly not my intention to do it. I take my responsibility as moderator in terms of making appointments very seriously, both to advisory personnel and the Public Works Planning Board. There are three things in my mind that make a good candidate for any particular committee. One is competence, one is willingness, and one is chemistry. The more people on a committee, the more chemistry and the ability to work together to get a job done is important to me. My appointments to advisory last year were extremely, extremely well considered, and what I mean by that is I took a long time. The folks that were not reappointed got a personal phone call from me explaining my rationale. Other folks who were interested in my rationale contacted me, and they also got that personal explanation. Ms. Hanlon did not contact me. She has no idea what my motives were, but yet, a couple of minutes ago, she said it became political and she doesn't understand why I took the action I did. Make no mistake, this started out, this motion and her presentation started out as a policy-based action.
And remains so.
It clearly is a reaction to an appointment that I did not make, that she did not like. This is no way to run a railroad. I do agree with Mr. Hamilton, that your choice at the ballot box to get a new moderator is how to fix this problem, not to change what's worked for 275 years, or however many years we've had a finance committee in town. Thank you, Mr. Hagerty.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to move the question. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, that requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of moving the question, which is shutting off debate, please raise your card. All opposed. I declare a two-thirds majority. Okay, we are now left to vote on the Article 32. As I mentioned earlier, there are four parts to this article. A yes vote would indicate that you were in favor of all four parts of the article, a no vote would mean you disapprove of all four parts. May I see the cards, please, for all the people who are in favor of Article 32? Raise your cards, please. Okay, all opposed. The motion fails.
Article 33, Ms. Hanlon.
Article 33 is to see if the vote will, excuse me, I move to see if the town will vote to amend certain sections of Chapter 27 relative to Town Council to read as follows, as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second?
Second.
Receives a second, Ms. Hanlon.
Section 1, as printed. Item 2, add the following Chapter 27 of the Town Code to read as printed in the warrant. Part 3, I move to see if the town will add the following to Chapter 27 of the Town Code to read as printed in the warrant. So it's important to note that this article speaks to the bylaw and the position itself, not any persons or individuals. This is based on our existing bylaw, and the large part of this proposed article is the actual existing town of Wellesley's current, in-place attorney policy. What you may hear is, we like it just the way it is. However, I do feel it's time for a change. Many of our bylaws have not been looked at in years, in some cases decades. The needs of the town has changed over time, become very complex with increasingly complex challenges. And again, this is Wellesley's policy in large part. It lays an excellent framework for duties and expectations and protects the town. So what's new in 27-4? Under appointment, board of selectmen shall each year after town meeting and whenever a vacancy shall exist, choose a competent lawyer to act as Town Council. The board of selectmen may remove him or her at will, and in case of a vacancy in the office, the selectman shall fill the same by appointment. He should be paid such compensation as the town shall determine. What's new in 27-5? Refer to your handouts. It's pretty straightforward, self-explanatory, and is based in large part on Wellesley's bylaw. Proposed Part 2, Special Counsel. Unless expressly authorized by statute, a vote of town meeting or the vote of the selectmen, no board or officer or official of the town shall engage, whether or not for remuneration, any attorney other than Town Council. Selectmen may, whenever they deem necessary, employ Special Counsel. What else is new in 27? Again, this is just very straightforward, speaks to basic expectations to serve the community, not any particular board or official, I mean, this is just common sense principles. Give candid and balanced legal advice, and provide regular training sessions on open meeting law, ethics law, public records law, and any other matter requested by the board of selectmen. This is standard, other towns do this, sometimes twice a year, standard, regular procedure. I'm asking for your support to vote to approve this language. It's a tried and true, tested policy in another town. This provides Town Council with detailed roles and responsibilities, it improves transparency, establishes standards for engagement, protects the town and the taxpayers by instituting standard detailed policies, and serves the best interests of the citizens by instituting expectations and responsibilities, including regular training sessions on state law. So the motion is Article 33, is to see if the town will vote to amend certain sections of Chapter 27 relative to Town Council, as printed in the warrant.
Okay, Mr. Butler?
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. This is not the way to do this. It's commendable that a citizen thinks that some aspect of town government should be changed, but the proper way would be to propose that perhaps we consider creating a committee to look at some governance issues, the issues are complicated. For a person who has no experience in the board of selectmen or the advisory committee to come forward and propose injecting a big text, piece of bylaw text merely because some other community uses it, is wildly inappropriate for us to vote for. We should not support this, and generally, the method is defective. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I address that?
Well, no, we're going to take comments from, I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, please.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I have a question and an observation. First, the question. This bylaw appears to apply to the entire town, and, you know, people use the word "town" rather loosely these days. Our town government is actually divided into a number of different executives, the largest of which is our K-8 school committee. Would this bylaw apply to the K-8 school committee?
This is intended to apply to the Town Council and Special Counsel positions.
It says "town," and I think, I'm unaware that the board of selectmen has the authority to appoint counsel for the school committee, and that would certainly need to be clarified.
I just clarified it.
Well, it's not clarified in the text.
Well, it's not, it doesn't say "school committee."
It says "town," and the word "town" is used rather loosely, and it should be used quite specifically. If you meant the board of selectmen, then it should say that. Then, secondly, I agree with Mr. Butler, you know, it is commendable, I think this requires some detailed study. For example, the board of selectmen has some very, very broad authorities under state law with respect to the appointment of counsel and the settling of legal matters for the entire town, and I'd like to see that, if this is really meritorious, that this be studied in more depth so that we may understand it. I'm not, I actually think that a study of this area would be highly productive and useful. I'm not crazy about some of the things that have happened over the last years, but I think this is not the right way to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney?
I'm speaking this time on behalf of advisory. Advisory unanimously opposes this article, and our opposition is based on the fact that currently in Massachusetts, an attorney is required to take not just a substantive law examination, but they're also required to take a professional responsibility examination. And in certain instances, that examination is much more difficult than the substantive law. The Supreme Judicial Court has issued a rule, it's Rule 3:07, goes on for in excess of 200 pages, single-spaced, and it sets out the ethical requirements and the ethical responsibilities and the professional responsibilities of counsel, whether they be private counsel or Town Council. And there are certain instances in this particular article that are inconsistent with those rules. And for that reason, advisory opposes this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Houlihan?
Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford. So I am commending Ms. Hanlon for this article. I think that it is expansive on what we have as what's doctored as Town Council currently in our current bylaw. Town Council is a broad stroke statement, and the language in one of your earlier slides actually showed what the current language is, which I think is just important, it's a very kind of short paragraph. I like the idea of being able to look at another town like Wellesley and see how they utilize language to place guardrails around the role of Town Council, and I would support this article. I did have an amendment, but I'm hesitant to put that, because I do realize this is a lot for the town to actually digest and vote on, so I'm not really sure. There is an amendment, but I'm not sure what to do about that. If I propose it right now, it's written, and then we can, maybe I do that. I'll make a motion to put my amendment in.
All right, so you have a motion, you have a motion to amend Article 33. It has been submitted. Tom, you have it? It's just as easy to...
So my amendment is...
Can you scroll a little higher, Tom?
I move to amend under Article 33 by adding the following. Add a new Section 27-8 entitled "Special Counsel," and inserting at Section 2, first paragraph of the article, quote, "a vote of the planning board," after, quote, "a vote of the town meeting," and before, "a vote of the selectmen."
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The additional wording that Ms. Houlihan is offering is on the screen. Any comment or question about Ms. Houlihan's amendment?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Hanlon, on the amendment.
I am very much in favor of Ms. Houlihan's amendment. I struggled with that portion, actually, of the article as proposed, and I think this is a terrific proposed amendment. Thank you.
Okay, are there a comment or question on the amendment? Yes, Ms. Houlihan?
Mr. Moderator, can I just provide my rationale for why I'm adding that?
Yes, please. Yes, yes.
So this town may or may not, if you're familiar, we've had a very long struggle with something called Park Central, and there was, I was very active in trying to get our planning board independent counsel, so they felt they wanted to appeal this. And our Town Council was conflicted and they couldn't. They needed to rely on the board of selectmen to appoint independent counsel. My feeling as an elected board, enforcing the zoning bylaws and being the planning board and with its rules and regulations, should be entitled, as an elected board, to hire independent counsel and not be restricted to a board of selectmen decision. That was my rationale.
Thank you. Mr. Coleri, on the amendment, you have something?
I'm going to relinquish my position at this point for John Butler.
Mr. Butler?
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. I'm opposed to the amendment also. What we see here is some people attempting with goodwill to fix things, but to dive in at a detailed level on machinery that's been working for a long time to fix some perceived problem of the last couple of years in some way, without the kind of consideration that's necessary by a group of people to vet this and be sure that we have some idea of what we're doing. And so this is just the wrong way for us to operate, it's dangerous for our community, and I urge to defeat this amendment and then defeat the main motion. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I address some of these points?
Coming back to you, I want to get everybody's comment from the floor. Mr. Coleri, are you...
Yes, Jim Coleri, 51 Central Street. I think John Butler just brought out the point. We've got one major project that's still in the court system that's driven this town crazy. Here we are, we're going to make major changes because, and no disrespect, but what I'm seeing in the past two or maybe even three articles, is we didn't, I didn't get what I want, so I'm going to change the rules to get what I want.
Wrong.
Well, it's whatever, that's your opinion. I don't know how the rest of you people feel, but I think Town Council, I've been under, probably, go back to even, probably Judge Bruin, Bill Bruin, and every Town Council we've ever had, we've always had fights with the Town Council. Why? Because Town Councils tell us what the law reads. We don't, we want them to say what we want. Not always can they do that. Not always can they do that. I sit on a board for the state with two legal councils on there, one from the Fire Marshal's Office and one from the Division of Professional Licensure, and we'll have a simple thing that sounds simple, and neither one of them agree, and both had a different interpretation that makes sense. I don't think we have a problem. I think there was a project that is a problem, unfortunately. Fights between the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board was a conflict, but I'm not willing to vote to change the policy of how the town operates. And certainly, if we're going to do that, we need to get this more than just in a town warrant, maybe a committee assigned to actually look at how our whole government operates again to maybe get to where people think it needs to be. I don't think the majority of the people sitting in this room feel that this needs to be a change. That's my gut feeling. I'm not at all in favor of this article, as amended or unamended. Both ways, I'm voting no.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney?
Yes, just speaking to the amendment, I understand the genesis of the amendment, but as I understand the town code and Town Council can correct me if I'm wrong, this would conflict with an existing bylaw that gives the Board of Selectmen the exclusive jurisdiction to hire counsel, number one. And number two, this amendment as written would therefore allow the Planning Board to hire special counsel for any other board, and it would give the Planning Board the co-jurisdiction, if you would, to hire legal counsel on behalf of the town regardless of the...regardless of the situation. So I am in opposition to this amendment. Advisory has not taken that position because it just was put up on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hanlon?
I'm saddened and disappointed to hear the somewhat patronistic tone of some of these remarks. I hire counsel. Counsel is a service. They're not gods, they're not demigods. I often hire and fire people, okay? And you're looking for qualifications and chemistry, to borrow somebody's word, to make sure that the job gets done right and that the right thing gets done. To comment that I have no experience on BOS and Advisory is irrelevant. I do have experience on boards. I put together teams of attorneys. I hire them and I fire them. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. The town of Wellesley, this in large part is their policy. I am strongly advocating for this. Virtually every word in this policy is existing policy in another town. Tried, true, and practiced already, to the point that it may be inconsistent in some ways with state law, don't worry about it, and don't trouble yourself with it because the Attorney General's Office will have the final say, and they will disapprove or simply not approve the parts that are not allowed. So, again, this is not a matter of not getting what you didn't want. I don't even know where that comment originates from, frankly. I do see and witness various boards struggling and at odds with one another, and that just simply shouldn't be the case. I agree with the amendment and appreciate the spirit with which it's put forward. If it conflicts with existing bylaw, I'm afraid we're going to have to set it aside for now, but I would ask that you do support this article as written. It's good policy. It's practice policy in other towns. You don't have to worry about anything being inconsistent because, again, the Attorney General's Office will rule on that, and home rule rules. You, the town meeting members, the people, the taxpayers, at the end of the day, it's your vote. This sets up procedures and expectations, and it's a good bylaw.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Joe Palmer, 158 Parkerville. I've never seen it written with a comma or do or act anything. I think it's grammatically incorrect.
That's a typo. I think it was in there twice.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney, you'll be last.
Nothing further on the amendment, Mr. Mar...
All right, so the amendment on the floor is to add the language "a vote of the planning board" to the article. This requires a majority vote. Yes, on the amendment, please. Selectmen? Selectmen, do not support the amendment, and Advisory, Advisory does not support. Requires a majority vote to make the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, the amendment fails. Now, we're back to the original article, which also requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 33, please raise your cards.
Thirty-four.
Sorry. No, 33.
Oh, sorry. Thirty-three.
How do we get this?
It already... To go back one.
Yeah, it's 33. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Okay, the article fails. Article 34. Ms. Hanlon?
This is prohibited conduct policy. I was hoping to put this forward first because, to me, it's so simple, so straightforward. Article 34, I move to see if the town will vote to add the following prohibited conduct policy to Chapter 27 of the town code. This actually is the existing town policy for the town of Brookline, almost verbatim.
I think we need to put the motion on the floor.
I just did.
Okay, do we have a second? Thank you.
So why do we care about these policies? These actions protect the town and the town payers, taxpayers, by instituting a self-explanatory standard policy for town government officials and volunteers. It's intended to be a common sense, helpful, written resource guide to laypersons. In addition to various state laws, the policy is essential, basic tool at the town level to ensure good and transparent local government performance as well as enforcement procedures. This is the long-established policy of the town of Brookline, almost verbatim. I called the town of Brookline. I spoke with their staff. I told them how I thought this was so well-written, so easy to understand, and a very good layperson's guide to state law, and their response was, "Thank you. We appreciate that." I also looked at Columbia Law School white paper on improving transparency and accountability in town government, and their top priority recommendation was instituting a policy exactly like this. So what you may hear is, "Don't worry about it. State law covers that." Or, "Let us do it. We've got this one. We've never seen this before," or, you know. The fact of the matter is, is we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, this is excellent, in practice, long-established policy for another town, and the fact of the matter is, is that volunteers may not necessarily look at state law. Never mind obey it, which you hope they would, but this establishes good procedures for transparent local government performance. So why do we care about these policies? Current policies are inadequate and reportedly have not been in practice or even implementation, known implementation, anyway. One would expect a policy like this to be posted information on the town website, and a policy like this clarifies state law, puts it in layman's terms, as well as other useful information. This policy establishes clear rules and procedures. When I spoke with Brookline, they put me through to the Town Council's Office and the Treasurer's Office, so that will tell you that quite some time ago, this policy originated out of those offices. Why is this...why this handbook of policies? It would be a reference guide for all government employees and volunteers and elected officials. It provides clarity, and it reinforces expected behavior. So I'm asking for your support to incorporate a prohibited contact policy in Southborough. Vote yes, please. This provision prohibits misconduct intended to establish procedures and to prevent, wherever possible, fraud, misappropriation, and corruption, to ensure for the prompt reporting and investigation, and to ensure a coordinated approach. In other words, it provides a way, a tool in the toolbox for process and procedure, but mainly, it's a helpful and excellent guide, long in place in the town of Brookline, for the layperson, for anyone who wants to volunteer. So I'm asking you to support this motion on Article 34. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Challen?
Roger Challen, 29 Oak Hill Road. I'm curious, and it may be that it's not appropriate for him to answer. I'm curious if Town Council has a view of this article, or if that's...if I'm even allowed to ask that question. I don't know. And I'm more of a, you know, the kind of process of getting something like this implemented.
With deference, I'm going to...can you narrow the question a little bit?
Okay, well, it's not a narrow article. It's...there's a lot of information here, so I guess moving along.
My hesitance, Ms. Challen, is that the policy or the article, if it were to pass, would apply to Town Council along with myself and everybody up front. So I'm hesitant to have him speak to it for that.
Okay, well, the proponent mentioned that she, when she talked to Brookline, and she...and then they put her through to the Town Council's Office, it sounded like it emanated from there. But that said, as I read through all of these items, I put them in at least three groups, and I think my overall view is, is this another solution to a problem that we don't have? Because I think that's how I view this. But the three groups that I came up with were behavior that's just plain criminal. It's, you know, if you do some of these things, you're breaking the law, and we have ways to deal with that outside policy. There's also some things that are just unenforceable. I mean, there's some comments about where we encourage town employees or non-town employees to, if they observe such a thing, to report it. Well, you can encourage something, but you're not really mandating it. And the third group is really, I think, items that may not be criminal, but they are...it's conduct that isn't allowed, and it's conduct that's already dealt with in existing employment contracts, existing policies already. So there's a lot of duplication. I'm not sure how many people are aware of this, but most, if not all, members of committees, boards are really required to take an ethics, well, whether I call it an exam or a test or something, to review all of the behavior that's really allowable and not allowable. So that's all I've got. I just think that, as I said, I think this is a solution to a problem that we don't have, and if we have part of this problem, then we maybe should think about trying to deal with it a different way.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
John Butler, Fort Davis Road. Agree with Mr. Challen. I want to emphasize one point. It may seem to members of the audience that here that the state law, ethics law, is remote from people who serve on committees, but as Mr. Challen pointed out, I believe it's annually, every volunteer on a committee needs to pass a test online to demonstrate that they know the state ethics law. So it's not something that is distant or not in the forefront or aware, that people are aware of with our existing procedures. The method of change that's being proposed here is incorrect. If the proponent had brought forward a warrant article suggesting that a committee look at a number of topics regarding municipal governance, including all the list of things that we're hearing about, that might very well merit support. But as you've heard, listening to Mr. Rooney, Mr. Challen, and others, there is some wisdom that comes from different perspectives, that only comes from sounding these topics out broadly for a period of time, and we can't skip that step and not put ourselves at risk. I urge you to defeat this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Devonacardier, 14 John Street. I want to say first, this is my first town meeting. Thank you for having them on Saturday. Are there any parts of this that are different from Brookline's bylaw? You said that it was mostly based on their...what they have. I wanted to know which parts were different from what they have.
It's almost...it's almost verbatim.
So clarify "almost." Which parts are different?
The only part that's different was the meaning of the other conduct prohibited by this policy, and it's not much.
Basically, it states that "conflict of interest forms and mullion certifications must be completed with sufficient detail." That has been a problem.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rooney?
So I don't want to get into the debate as to Brookline versus Southborough, but I pulled up Brookline's policy on my laptop when I heard it. Was almost similar. There are a number of differences, in particular... Sorry, I have to put my glasses on. Under Section B Responsibility, but again, it appears to be, the structure appears to be from Brookline, but there are some omissions in this and additions in this that are not in Brookline's.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I also want to add the point that this, in its entirety, has been reviewed by expert legal counsel, experts in municipal law.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boland?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Boland, 35 East Main Street. I must say, I'm really disappointed in a lot of the petition articles because I think they attack our elected officials. They question their integrity. They question and attack the values of people on the Advisory Committee as well. I don't live in Brookline. I don't live in Wellesley. I'm proud to live in Southborough, and we've done things very well for a number of years. And there's a way, if you want to change policy, if you want to change how people are appointed, there's a method. Run for elected office like these people and other people in this room have, and face the music. Make a decision and stand by it and be willing to be questioned on it. These people do it. They do an excellent job of it, and I'm proud to be represented by them. I would...I think we should end the discussion on this. We should move the question, and let's move on.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to respond to that, please.
Very briefly, Ms. Hanlon.
Thank you. I admire these people as you do. I love this town. My husband was born in this town. I'm a second-generation family. My brother-in-law and sister-in-law ran face school for decades, so this has absolutely nothing, nothing, to do with individual people. The very fact that this is a suggested article from a different town, I'd be...I'm stunned at those remarks, and I don't know why anyone would take this personally. It's just times have changed. It's just, times have changed. Times have changed, and it's time to change our approach to these bylaws. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Why would you be against, and in fact, this is actually called an anti-fraud, anti-corruption policy? Why? Why does Brookline have this? It's not an insult to any particular individual in this room. It is, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. That's, that's my motto, and this is, why would you be against this? It's, it's crazy. I think this is a very good thing, common sense guideline, to hand to any new volunteer and say, hey, yeah, I need to do this, or no, I don't need to do that. As far as open meeting law, training, we right now have three violations from the Attorney General's office. You're saying it ain't broke? Well, let me tell you, go ask the Attorney General. It's broke, okay? I read the open meeting law handout that you were referencing, and it says, almost verbatim, you, you, it is strongly suggested that you, for instance, and this is just one thing, you, you release minutes, approve and release minutes in a timely manner, of course, consistent with state law, and you do it at the next meeting. Unfortunately, I, and I have no idea what the reason is... Unfortunately, we've had meeting minutes that you rely on, you, the taxpayers rely on, because you're working so hard. That's your information source to what's going on in my town, what's going on in my neighborhood, how does this affect my house, how does this affect my family, my children, how does this affect the equity in my home? You know what? We've, we've had serial, serial releases of minutes that have been overdue since 2013, with no discussion. So, I read open meeting law, I read that in the open meeting law guide, you're supposed to release them, or approve them at the next meeting, it's right in the, in the, in the policy. But for whatever reason, that was not done.
All right, Ms. Hanlon, I think, I think you've done a good job responding to Mr. Boland. Mr. Boland did move the question, cuts off all debate, requires a two-thirds vote, in which case the main article will come to the floor. All those in favor of Mr. Boland's motion to move the question, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, I declare a two-thirds majority, that brings Article 34 to the floor. This is a majority vote, all those in favor of Article 34, please raise your cards. All opposed? Article 34 fails. Very quickly, before we move on to Article 35...
Thank you.
Tom, could you come out front, please? Before, I know you're all gonna be in mad rush to get out of here after we're done with 35, but I want to tell you, Tom Laflamme is our IT Director in Town, and he's the guy responsible for all this, which just doesn't happen tonight, it happens over the previous many weeks, as presentations get sent in, and motions get revised, and keeping up with what you see up here on the screen is no small task, and I just want to acknowledge Tom for that, he makes my job.[826.00][826.00](APPLAUSE). Thank you very much, he makes my job, oh, much easier. Okay, Article 35, last but not least, Ms. Patricia Burns-Fiori.
I've been asked to present this, I was also...
We need a motion on the floor, please.
Okay, motion that the town vote to approve the article is printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? It's been seconded. Okay, so Mr. Wyshin is gonna speak to this?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Article 35 is a citizen petition regarding pilot payments. Pilot payments are, as acronym, payment in lieu of taxes. This is not a new subject to Southborough in 2010 and 2011, due to the almost heroic efforts of former Selectman Rooney. This was brought up and extensively researched, and I quote to you, "Since tax-exempt institutions benefit from a taxpayer-funded services such as fire and police protection, it is only fair and just for tax-exempt organizations to pay a share of those costs." So, here's an example of a number of services used by the nonprofits in town. They include, obviously, police and fire, but also smaller services that you wouldn't actually think of, inspectional services, obviously DPW, other services like that. There comes the school bus. The major cost to the town of Southborough is actually in schooling, which is one of the major costs, obviously, in the school, in the entire budget of the town. Eighteen schoolchildren from St. Mark's residential housing attend Northborough-Southborough public schools, there are six children from Fay. The estimated cost of this is $449,000 a year, and those figures are from the published accounts of what it costs to educate a student in Southborough, which is just shy of $18,000 a year. Additional services used by some of our nonprofit include the fire and police departments, as I briefly outlined before. This is not a small amount of money either, the average police call ranges, or fire call ranges, the cost to the town of Southborough between $1,500 and $2,000 each. So, as these calls mount up, the approximate total, Patty, this was what, 2017?
This was 2018.
2018.
The cost for fire is approximately $1,300 per call, and the cost for police was about $140 per call.
Okay. Oops, what's happening? Did you want to say that? Just go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. The cost for police was about $140 per call, and the cost for fire was about $1,300 and change per call, and that was based on the budget from fiscal year 18, and the call numbers were actually current-year call numbers.
Now, this is a map of the center of Southborough, which shows the nonprofit exempt property held by St. Mark's and the Fay School. Interestingly enough, do you have the, did you bring the pointer? Interestingly enough, if we can actually point...
The button on the side.
Oh, there we go. Interestingly, the historic nucleus of St. Mark's School was this tiny little lot here, initially in 1866, and the initial starting of the Fay School was this tiny little lot here, and you can see how these schools have grown to encompass large portions of land. Now, as you know, when this land is purchased by these schools, it is removed off the tax rolls. The figure there shows you what the taxes would have been had this land still been maintained in some sort of taxable format. Now, if you live in Fayville, this is probably even more shocking to you, because this is the New England Center for Children, its original historical nucleus was here, and over the last, since 2011, all of these properties shown in green have been acquired in the Fayville area, again, removing them from the tax rolls. You can see what the assessed value and what the tax loss is, but also the fact that these properties are moved, removed from local zoning at the same time. Now, the schools in question actually make payments, they're voluntary. The New England Center for Children has contributed $80,000, $90,000. St. Mark's has regularly contributed $45,000 a year, and Fay about $10,000 a year. However, these payments are woefully less than the cost of the services that these schools consume and that we all pay for. So, other schools around the areas contribute vastly more. Groton School, for instance, Lawrence Academy, Phillips, Phillips Academy, which is something of an outlier, these are, pays, has a very large endowment, so it pays pilot payments of almost $400,000 a year. But what's really kind of interesting about this, Patty's done a huge amount of research, the Milton Academy pays the town $120,000 in fiscal '18, but their policy is quite interesting. They've agreed with the town that when they buy residential properties for faculty housing, for properties that are non-essential to their nonprofit mission, that they leave them on the tax rolls, so that every year, the town knows what its revenue is, the schools know what their expenditures are going to be, and this moves up and down with the value of the properties. This might be a model that the town of Southborough could potentially follow, because it really sets things out and doesn't require voluntary or legal, you know, agreements that you would have to vary from year to year, or five-year term, et cetera, et cetera. So, moving forward, we would urge the Board of Selectmen to engage with Southborough's larger nonprofits, to realize a reasonable annual pilot payment in lieu of the other towns surrounding us. I want to point out, this is not at all an attack on St. Mark's, or Fay, or the New England Center for Autism, they're great neighbors, they do a lot of cooperation. However, to be a good neighbor means to make sure that the entity in which you exist, i.e. the town of Southborough, is not financially disadvantaged, and that is why the school, that is why Milton Academy, for instance, pays those payments to the town of Milton, because they realize that the acquisition of these properties was extremely deleterious to the tax base. That also may be that, that the mass tax law is a little unclear about whether or not these ancillary properties are truly exempt from taxation, so that, you know, their actions may not be entirely, you know, well-intentioned, they might be covering themselves, but either way, there's certainly room to negotiate. Now, if the schools don't engage on this, there are some options, and Cambridge has, for instance, removed itself from, the home rule petition from the Dover Amendment. Now, the Dover Amendment has nothing to do with taxation, it has to do with the fact that these institutions are exempt from local zoning. So, for instance, there is no protection, historical protection, or size restrictions, or other building, if you or I were going to build on that similar lot, we would be subject to zoning restrictions, these schools are not. Now, why would this potentially help with the negotiations? It would potentially make residential properties in town less attractive for acquisition. And the schools are continuing to acquire properties, the old Dr. Stone property on Main Street was just acquired by Fay a year or two ago, and the house next door to the fire and police station that we're transferring to them, the old one, is going to be given as a donation to St. Mark's, so another piece of property on Main Street will pass into St. Mark's's hand. So what we would do is urge the Board of Selectmen to explore the legal and tax ramifications, so that we might undertake a fair shake with these institutions. Mr. Moderator, we also, there was also an amendment proposed to this language, I don't know if it would be appropriate to do it now?
Well, it was submitted by...
Ms. Fiori?
...her sidekick here, if she wants to make that motion.
I move to amend the main motion under Article 35 by striking the words "three" before a million dollars, and by substituting the word "eight."
So receive a second?
Second.
Second? Go ahead.
This was an attempt to make sure that the negotiations for these pilot payments was focused on the major institutional, educational institutions in our town, and exempted smaller nonprofits, as well as the archdiocese of Worcester.
Any comment or question on the amendment to change "three" to "eight"? Yes, Mr. Kalenda?
Thank you. So why wasn't that thought of before then? I mean, because this gets into that slippery slope that many have thought that this could be that threatening kind of article against nonprofits, including churches. So, if it starts here, where does it end? Why wasn't this thought of before, what, a few minutes ago?
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I mean, you know, it starts at eight million and ends at eight million. There has been an incredible amount of research put into this, both by Mr. Rooney and by Ms. Fiori, which has taken weeks and weeks and weeks of being put together. I will honestly say that Ms. Fiori contacted many members of the town government, and it took an exceedingly long time to put these, get these figures together. Many of her emails went unanswered, so this has been something of an evolution and process. Besides, we've been taking feedback from people as we move along, and we've ascertained through a considerable amount of research, that the eight-million-dollar threshold is well above any of these other nonprofits. Open Space, for instance, has 1.7 million in property value, I mean, it's, it's quite high. Granted, it's something of an arbitrary amount, but it is high enough set, again, to start this threshold. And again, I want to emphasize to you that what we're doing is voting to urge the Boards of Selectmen to open these negotiations. This started in 2011, and nothing has been accomplished in all of this time. The schools have continued to acquire properties, take them off the tax rolls, and not increase their payments at all. So that's a real problem.
If I can just make one comment to Mr. Kalenda's comment. The reason for that "three" was because we were trying to seek the big fish first. And it wasn't until after the research, when I got all the assessed values, and we put the numbers together, that realized that this could cause some issues. The Dover Amendment was actually written for religious institutions, and excluded educational institutions, if I'm not mistaken. And it was only over the development of the understanding of that law and case law, that educational institutions were taken into it. But, to get back to your question, the "eight" was just because we didn't really have all the numbers at that time.
Anything on the amendment?
Anything on the amendment, sir?
Yeah, well, I just, Ben Kais, 43 Lover's Lane, I would be in favor of that amendment, I just think one of the things that's difficult about this article is that second half, which, without the amendment, leaves quite a lot of potential unintended consequences for, for other nonprofits, especially churches, so I, to me, the confusing thing about this article is that the first, the first section talks about the three million, now it's eight million threshold, but then the second half, which talks about, which is kind of like, if, if Fay-St. Mark's don't pay up, so to speak, then there's this other option, this home rule option, it doesn't specify which, in that second half, it doesn't specify which nonprofits will be affected. It says their, their nonprofit entities will be removed from protection altogether. So does the second half imply all nonprofits in Southborough?
But, do you, do you under, can I speak to you?
Yes.
Do you understand the difference between the purpose of the Dover Amendment versus the, these nonprofit entities are tax-exempt by virtue of a Massachusetts revenue statute that has nothing to do with the Dover Amendment?
Okay.
So, repealing the Dover Amendment and gaining control over the zoning issues does nothing, does not affect the current tax-exempt status of the nonprofits?
Okay.
Trust me, they're still not gonna pay you taxes.
Well, that's, that's a helpful clarification.
Ms. Braschio?
I'm not speaking to the amendment.
Mr. Hamlin?
I'm not speaking to the amendment.
All right, why don't we take a vote on the amendment, and then we can give it back to the main article. Amendment requires a majority vote to change "three" to "eight." All those in favor, the amendment? Thank you, all opposed? Okay, the amendment passes, we're now on the main article, as you see on the screen, and now let's come back to Ms. Braschio.
Actually, I think Mr. Rooney was first, sir.
Fair enough.
Ladies first.
Okay, that's perfect, thank you. Lisa Braschio, 13 Oregon Road, I'm speaking as a citizen, not as, I'm not speaking for the board. I would like to thank Ms. Fiori for starting a much-needed discussion. I had hoped to have the opportunity to speak with you, but unfortunately, life, family, it all sometimes gets in the way. While I don't support this article as a whole, I do support starting a discussion regarding pilot. I do not support threatening to take away rights afforded by law to benefit a negotiation. The Dover Amendment allows for exemption for agricultural, religious, and educational corporations from certain zoning restrictions, and does not increase or decrease revenues to the town. Let me share some information before you decide if this article as a whole is what you, as voting citizens of Southborough, want to do. Fay and St. Mark's have appeared to somewhat, obviously now as well, be the center of this discussion. I want to share with you some of the things that they do that may be overlooked, I'm not attaching a quantifiable value to any of these things, it's just for information purposes. So, from a recreation standpoint, I had the opportunity to speak to recreation, and St. Mark's, they give to the town four to eight hours a week, based on status, there's no charge for grass use fields. Two to three times Woodward Camp during the summer has use of the pool during their summer camps at no charge. summer camps at no charge. Two hours a week, November through March, for gym use, no charge. Two to four hours a week at start of lacrosse and baseball cage, they have use of the baseball cages at a discounted rate. Free vacation and holiday skates, reduced rate for turf. Three large Southborough non-sports-attended events are on St. Mark's field. Heritage Day, which I'm sure many of in this room attend, Santa, for many of the families coming down on the helicopter. And the food trucks with the Rotary just did this past year, had a tremendous turnout and use of meeting space at no charge. As well, the Police and Fire Department had use of, the Police and Fire Department at no charge for three years while the Public Safety Building was being built. On Fay, and again, this is for informational purposes, no quantifiable value has been placed on this other than that. When Recreation was scheduling youth soccer, there was no charge. The girls' lacrosse has no charge for steady use for the season of fields. Men's basketball, no charge. A rope course, no charge for Woodward summer camps. And the town's farmer's market is there as well. While I'm not asking you if you think this is enough, it should certainly weigh into your opinion. There is a value in what I shared, not monetarily, but if the town had to pay for use of the space elsewhere, it would affect your taxes. I would hate potentially to use use of the space and putting the town in a negative bargaining position. That's what this does, in my opinion. I am not here to debate whether this is enough one way or the other, but you should have all the information before you decide tonight. I believe a discussion certainly needs to take place and I will bring this to the Board for discussion. So, today, I ask you to not support this article as written. Don't start a future negotiation for the Board by threats of taking away rights afforded by law that don't affect pilot payments. Thank you.
Thank you. Look over here, Mr. Rooney.
I'm not sure this hall realizes the amount of time that Michael and Patty have spent on this. I do. It was about a year ago, I started speaking with Michael about this issue and I spent an extended phone call with Patty just recently. And the amount of work that they've done to shine light on this is extraordinary. I spent hundreds, perhaps even more, hours on the pilot issue early in my tenure as a selectman. And I had the occasion to spend numerous hours with the headmasters of both Fay and St. Mark's. And I got to understand their thought processes and also their Boards of Trustees' thought processes. And speaking on behalf of advisory, I can also tell this hall that we do not support this article, but we support the objective. I can tell you again from firsthand experience, the way to get contributions from these nonprofits is not by hitting them with an annual amount of a pilot payment or to threaten them with the Dover Amendment. The way to do it, and we have been successful in the past, I agreed 100% with Michael and Patty's presentation with the one exception where Michael said that nothing has been accomplished. If you recall, not too long ago, we secured two police cruisers, about $45,000 each from these schools. And that's the way to engage these schools in contributing to town services. If you can present them with a capital expense item which is reasonably related to the operation of their institution, they are more than willing to come to the town. We can't forget that Southborough is Southborough in part because of the presence of these institutions. Everyone's property values are increased by their presence here. And they also understand and appreciate and realize that they need to contribute to the ever-increasing cost of municipal services. But the way to do that, for instance, is you go to them on an annual basis, having done the homework that has already been prepared as a result of this citizen's petition, and you sit down with them and then you ask them for specific capital items, whether it be cruisers, we're just building, we're building a new public safety facility, we need a new radio system, certainly reasonably related to their educational objective. Every year, this hall is asked to approve between $250,000 and $400,000 of road maintenance monies. You go to them and look for road maintenance monies. If Ms. Galligan needs a street plow, a sidewalk plow, something related, if you can relate it back to their overall educational activities, they are more than willing to have the discussion with you. I can tell them, if you sit down with them and ask them for a six-figure annual pilot payment, you'll be met with the exact same response that we were met with. And that was a resounding no. They are very reluctant, the Boards of Trustees', which may have changed, obviously, in the last seven or eight years, but they do not, well, they will not assign a particular annual payment as a pilot payment and be committed to that. But they are willing to come to the table. And it's for that reason that advisory does not support, the article is written, but supports unconditionally the amount of work that's gone into this and the objective of bringing them to the table in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I want to note that it's a rare day when Mr. Wyshin and I agree, but in this case, we do. I think a couple of figures that he didn't put up are telling, and I think we need to think about this. The average home, not the median, the average home in Southborough pays a little over $10,000 a year in taxes. And I think that we should compare that number with the sums currently on offer from, in particular, the Fay and St. Mark's. It's disappointing, to be honest. Secondly, with all due respect to my friend, Mr. Rooney, I think we have not been successful in the pilot process. The sums are really not meaningful versus the services that are consumed. And I think, you know, the old adage is, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. This is a reasonable step to take because today, when we go to St. Mark's, we're not negotiating. I'm sorry, but when you have negotiations, both sides have something they want from the other side. We are, I hate to use this word, but begging. And it's not seemly. This gives us at least something we can negotiate with. Further, it binds us to do absolutely nothing other than to come back. If we don't receive what the Board of Selectmen considers to be a reasonable solution, then the matter comes back before this body for additional debate. There's nothing binding in this resolution. So, I think this is a reasonable step for this body to go on record, to ask these institutions to begin to make their fair share and gives the Board of Selectmen in particular at least a tool to go forward with the negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morris was next.
Don Morris, Planning Board. I see the proposal there that would remove the protection under Mass General Law 48 from the schools. Just for information, St. Mark's, Fay School, and the New England School, they all participate as if they had no protection. All of their projects over the last at least 10 or 15 years, each of those schools have come and submitted site plan applications to the Planning Board for approval. The STEM Building, the Fine Arts Building at St. Mark's, the solar project at St. Mark's, the kindergarten project on the lower part of Fay School campus, the new dorms on Main Street, the Naterium at the New England School, the Child Care Center at the New England School. All three schools have fully participated in the site plan process and have, from my experience and memory, not sought any protection under the Dover Amendment, just for your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Cook was next.
Kathy Cook, Chair of the Advisory Committee. So, not to repeat what my colleague, Mr. Rooney, said, which I agree with, I just wanted to make clear, if you can remember back when I gave my report a long time ago, 1:00, the second thing on our wish list for additional revenue was additional pilot payments. So, we are very supportive of the intent behind this article. I also think Mr. Wyshin and Ms. Fiore did a great job on this presentation, so thank you very much. Obviously, you did a ton of work. But I wanted to also add a sense of optimism to this. I actually, until recently, sat on a private school board, so I've got a pretty good idea of how they look at the world and how they think. I also understand how their finances work internally. So, I'm optimistic that if you don't, I mean, this is not binding, so you're really not going to tie their hands, but I'd prefer not to pass this tonight and let the Board of Selectmen, who should lead this effort, take this up and see what can be done over the next year and then report back to us at this time next year. And then, we can decide whether anything further should be done. But I just want everybody to know, even though you're going to see 0.6 for advisory, the only reason we're not supporting this, we don't want to start the negotiations here. We want the Board of Selectmen to lead this effort. We think that they will do that for us and I am hopeful that we're going to come back with a pretty good result this time next year.
Thank you. Pardon?
Can I respond to that?
Want to respond to that specific comment? I'm going to come back to you guys at the end. We're going to go through everybody here, there's quite a few. Mr. Kaleri.
Jim Kaleri, 51 Central Street. I got a little experience with this. A number of years ago, we went for the aerial tower for the fire department. We were looking at a million dollar, maybe 1.1 million dollar expenditure for a fire truck, which we felt, the committee felt, the town will never vote for. And one of the key issues we needed to get on board was the schools because it seemed to be, the citizens' town, the only reason why we wanted this truck was for the schools, which was proven later to be false. But as we went to the schools, we went to Fay School, did a dog and pony presentation, half, I consider, 50% successful. They took their $10,000 in lieu of taxes and they put that over to pay for the ladder truck, which didn't help. St. Mark's School with an effort came forward and said, "Okay, we'll double our ante and we'll help support the aerial tower for 10 years towards the bond." The committee didn't have to go to New England Center for Children. I worked for them, for their fire alarm company, for over 20 years and they said to me, I met with their Development Director, and she said, "Tell me why we need to consider giving you a dime for this truck." And I explained what it would do for the school, for protection. Okay. When it was all said and done, they came in as the highest contributor, 120,000 over 10 years. And after it was all said and done, I had a conversation with her over a project and I talked to her about what they had done and why they did it. And she said something to me that stuck in my mind, it still stays with me today. She said, "First of all, in the tax law, we don't have to give you a dime. The original agreement of the original bond is long gone, we don't have to contribute to that anymore. We want to be good citizens, but the other thing you gave me, when I went to the Board of Directors, and most of these schools, most of the Board of Directors do not live in our community, they don't send kids to our schools, their job is they develop their programs for the school." She said, "It was easier to tell them, 'I need this money because it's going to help our schools, it's going to protect our schools, it's going to protect our students and staff.'" So, it was very easy to prove the point, the data you gave me, to contribute the additional money. She said, "She and the school itself contributes much better than the other two, as you saw." And I'm quite frankly frustrated with St. Mark's and especially Fay School for not anting up and helping us when we need. And I think we need to pressure them. However, I don't think if you go with a threat, you're going to win because they don't have to give you anything by tax law. Whether we like that or not, that's the law. So, you can threaten them all you want, you're not going to get it. But I think with the projects we have going in this town, going into the school, "Hey, look, we need help," or even go to them and say, "Look, we need help. You're putting your kids in the school, we can't sustain this any longer. We're going to lower, what we can do for your students as well as for our own, you've got to help us that way." You can convince them it's going to help them with their staff. And I think going at it with a positive spin will help. And the other thing is, if you have an organization or a thing that you're building, you're building a police and fire station, maybe we need equipment for going in that station, we don't have the money for it and our budgets to do it, and with the Warren Article, we prove for it. Let the fireman or policeman go with you and tell the schools how it's going to affect their school, what they need to improve their condition. That gives them some bite to go back to their Board of Directors to make a decision. Because if they take the money away to give it to us, they're going to take it away from one of their programs. The last I knew, St. Mark's was in somewhere around a $500 million eventual rebuild of the school. And they've done a number of the buildings, I don't know where they stand at this point. They have endowments, Fay has endowments, New England Center, I do not believe, do. We do not want to annex that school in particular over this project. I endorse what you're doing and I think it's right, but I think we have to be really careful how you go down that road. And I think there's a chance that we can win. If we go out of rung, we'll lose totally.
Thank you. Ms. Devine was next.
I just have a quick question. I'm really sorry if you already answered this, but are you confident with the eight million dollar threshold that it only applies to these three schools?
I have the list of, I have the list of all the tax-assessed property, non-tax, non-taxable, tax-exempt property and what the assessed values are as supplied by the assessor's office. And, yes.
So, you're confident it's just those three?
Well, the only other one is, of course, the town of Southborough, who owns a lot of tax-exempt property.
Okay, so, other nonprofits such as Salf or, not Salf?
Well, the Open Land Foundation, right, is 1.7 million dollars, 1.79 million dollars, I believe, in current assessed value.
And what about Chestnut Hill Farm? Trustees?
Could I grab my computer? I could tell you.
Yeah, I'll speak, I'm a resident here, but I'm also an employee of the farm, so I'm curious. And I've been texting people that I work with, asking...
If that is on the list of tax-exempt property, I would have that information.
Thanks.
All right, we'll come back to that, get you that answer. Sir, you were next. No, you're right, I'm sorry, you were next.
Robert Reader, for Blendenwood's Drive. Before, I'd like to make one comment that's interesting as I listen to this. New England Center for Children probably own, if not the smallest, near the smallest amount of land of those three, put no kids in our schools and yet make more payments, a higher payment than the other two. I thought that was interesting. My only comment is, I personally believe that nonprofits, especially schools that have a lot of residential housing, cannot continue to buy land with impunity in our town and remove things from the tax base while we're relegated to begging for money. So, I think it's important that we send a message that the town is concerned. I am concerned about the second paragraph. So, in hopes of getting something approved tonight, I offer the amendment to strike the second paragraph. I move that motion, I mean, I move that amendment.
Motion's been made to strike the second paragraph. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, of course. Need to come down front and make that amendment. While we're doing that, Ms. Conley was next.
Sure, this isn't as to the amendment, this is to the overall article, is that okay?
Yes.
So, I just, so, with the budget, the way it was this year, we've heard a lot in our town about the budget crisis that we're under and that we're going to continue to be under for the foreseeable future. I know as a member of my committee, even though I'm not speaking on behalf of my committee, that, you know, we had to be very careful with our budgets and all the other boards and committees were hearing the same message. So, certainly, this is an area of opportunity. My thought is that this is more of, not, doesn't need to be used as a threat, but is more of a mandate, that the town is supportive of this. And I think we have the facts with the numbers that the proponents have put together, comparing what the private schools are paying, as to what other private schools and other similar towns are paying. Again, we don't have to do this in a hostile way, we have excellent relationships with the schools and as everybody agrees, they offer so much to our communities, but there has to be some sort of equitable balance there. And I think if anything, this gives the Board of Selectmen, who would be the negotiators here or otherwise, some ammunition to say, "Listen, this is something that our town really wants. This is what our resident wants. They want us to come to you and work out an equitable deal that's reduced a paper that we follow, not just, you know, a handshake, 'Okay, maybe you'll give me a police cruiser next year.'" So, I think this actually is good and I don't think it needs to be used in a threatening way. I think it's something that could be done in... that could be done in a fashion that doesn't have to be threatening. Thank you.
Okay. So, I assume you would oppose the amendment. That's being prepared. Okay. Yes, sir. All right. We'll come back to it.
Yeah. Andrew Pfaff, 50 Oak Hill. Couple extra points I just wanted to bring up based upon this. One, St. Mark's doesn't charge the town rent for the police or fire station for three years, which I think is a good benefit to the town. Also, I believe it's about 70 Southborough residents go send their kids to Fay School and about 40 to St. Mark's. So, that's roughly about a $1.8 million savings for our local schools. The other piece is, I'm glad we're kind of striking the second piece here, because removing the Dover Amendment would affect all nonprofits in the town, not just the ones 8 million. And again, to Mr. Morris's comment, if the schools are already going through the normal zoning process, it's not really going to have any effect, so I'm glad we're striking that. But I think in general, the town of being threatening to some of the oldest residents of this town and really the founders of this town is a little bit of a message that I don't think we need to send. Thanks.
Okay. So, while, at this point, the amendment's been put in. You have, quickly, you have the number, the value of Chestnut Hill Farm?
Trustees of Reservations, Chestnut Hill Road property is assessed at $918,700.
Okay. So, the amendment's on the screen in front of you to strike the second paragraph. Let's take that up, and then we'll continue the discussion, unless anyone wants to speak specifically to the amendment itself. All right. Amendment requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment to strike the second paragraph of the article, please raise your...
Do I get to speak to it? Do I get to say anything?
About the amendment.
About the amendment.
Sure. Yes.
Sorry to take your time. Please note where it does say, "Non-binding," and the fact that if Paragraph 1 does not work out, in the same way that we've been doing it for the entire 28 years I've lived in this town and each year seen my taxes go up, the next step is to come back to town meeting and request the home rule. That's what's written there. It doesn't mean that anything is immediately happening. But if we continue to do this in the way that we have done it for the 28 years that I've lived in this town, we're going to get the same result.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies. The amendment requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment to strike the second paragraph, please raise your cards. All those opposed. All those in favor. All those opposed. Let's do it one more time. Doing my best. In favor, please. Hold them up, please. Keep them up for a second. Okay, and opposed. I have to count it. I have to count it. Tellers, please come forward.
Well, you had to get one out of the whole evening.
Thank you, Michael. Listen. Are you ready, Jim? All right. All those in favor of the amendment, I need you to stand up with your card. Hold your card in front of you, and stand up and stay standing until the tellers can count. Yeah. If you're standing in the back of the hall, beyond the columns, you need to come forward. All the way in the back. Mr. Challen. All right. There are two tellers per section that are going to count you. Please stay standing and hold your cards up.
21, okay.
Please stay standing. All right. All of you who are standing, please be seated. All of you in the hall opposed to the amendment, please stand, hold up your cards. Let the tellers get you counted. Jim, can they sit?
I think so.
Yeah, that's right. At the very beginning. I used it. Okay. You could be seated. Okay. On the motion to amend, all in favor was 75. All opposed was 59. That's 55.6%. So, the motion to amend carries. We're back to the main article with the amendment as shown on the screen, striking the second paragraph. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to make the point that, I'm Whitney Beals, 10 Chestnut Hill Road, President of Southborough Open Land Foundation. You know, we don't require any public services in the parcels of land that we own. And I just, I wanted to make that point and didn't want to be subject to, you know, some future increases in the valuation of our parcels that might put us over a threshold that might come back at some point. It's, so, we're not a burden on the town's finances. In fact, we're quite a positive influence on town finances because of all those open parcels of land, which increase property values for people who live nearby. And they're all open to the public, you know, for passive recreation. And I just, I don't want to get into a situation where there's collateral damage done by, you know, this particular proposal. And there may be others where that could be true. Just making that point. And I, one other point is, I think the town of Milton provides a wonderful example of maybe what we could do to edge the two big schools, Fay and St. Mark's, into paying some of their fair share for the, I don't know how many houses, private houses are actually owned by those two schools together. I didn't hear that figure. It's somewhere in the, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 30, isn't it?
We have that figure. Hang on.
It's a lot. And if we could edge the schools into doing, you know, something approximating what Milton does, that would be a huge win for us, generating revenue from those private residences, that, some of which do send children to our school systems. We did have that figure. Thank you.
Well, do you want to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Speak to this? Okay. Just to his question regarding that. Fay School, the number is a little disingenuous, because there's three-family, a two-family apartment building with seven apartments, single-family, single-family, a single-family, a two-family, a single-family. So, how many was that? I'm not sure. And then St. Mark's, there's one...
Two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, 20.
There's 13 single families and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, two families. Well, that's not even accounting 55 Main Street, which is now a three-family. So, I'm not sure where that's accounted for in here. That says it's a single family, and we all know that 55 Main Street is a three-family.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on Article 35? Okay. Article 35, as amended, requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 35, please raise your cards. All those opposed, motion carries. Having disposed of Article 35, we have completed our warrant. At this point, do I have a motion to dissolve the 2019 annual town meeting? Is there a second? All in favor. We are adjourned.